Of course, I have. Of course, I had to have a shaving accident before my... Okay, okay. I know, it really is amazing. Heather, how can we keep this from... Can you stop it from going back? I know, but they're not... Do you know, hand, and try to look at the letters. Sorry, I'll figure it out. You pull that and then stand up. There you go. Yeah, I like the... So it goes back and forth? I just want to point out that I chose the other chairs. How did you do it?
All right, good evening. It's an early evening, but nevertheless, good evening. Please be courteous and turn off your cell phones while our meeting is in process. It is Monday, August 7th, 2017. It is my pleasure to call to order this joint meeting of Healdsburg City Council and Redevelopment Successor Agency. It's been seven weeks since we've met, and I want to welcome back my colleagues on the council and our city staff and our beloved townspeople and guests in our newly modified town hall. More about that later. It's Monday, August 7th, and let the record reflect that our respected Mayor McCaffrey is not present tonight, but we do have four out of five present council members: Counselor Noyokas, Counselor Hagley, Counselor Gold, and me, Vice Mayor Manziel, and I will be the presiding officer for this evening's meeting. So let us begin with the pledge allegiance. So we're going to begin some invitations. So I'd like to invite a motion to approve tonight's agenda, but before that, are there any requests for changes to tonight's agenda?
Vice Mayor Manziel, staff request that we pull item in as a Nancy for a later meeting.
Okay. I move to approve the agenda as modified.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, here we go. Now I need to hear a motion to approve the minutes from several meetings: June 5th, June 19th, June 20th, and July 17th meetings.
I actually have a correction that needs to be made on the June 19th. Packet page number 40, it says, "League of California Cities," that I'm the delegate, and actually, Councilmember Noyokas is the delegate. I just switched it. Other than that, it looks fine.
Okay, with that exception, are all the other minutes standing as approved? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, so we approve the minutes, and I think we need to do a second.
Is there a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Second. Okay, thank you. All those approving, please say aye.
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 Okay. All right, since there's no announcements or presentations tonight, we'll move to council reports on matters of interest occurring since our previous meeting. And as stated previously, it's been seven weeks, so I may be more liberal regarding our report time, but it's encouraged to go three minutes, as we ask our public comment timeframe to adhere to. So remember, it's a report out for council town members. Who would like to begin? Counselor Gold?
Yes, so I attended a presentation by the Housing Land Trust, which was very informative for me, because it's an organization that didn't even exist when I was on the council before, and now, of course, it's working in partnership on several projects with Healdsburg and doing wonderful work, helping worthy families get into homes. So that was an interesting evening. I attended the League of Cities Conference in Monterey with most of the council. It was very informative to talk to people from other cities and compare how their situations compared to ours and what their problems are. One interesting, kind of in a scary way, conversation I had was with a council member from St. Helena, who told me that at least 50% of the houses in St. Helena are unoccupied most of the time. And that was concerning to me, because it's such a strong trend here, and I'm concerned that we could find ourselves in a similar position before very long. So that's enough about that. I do think we should be looking at ways to slow that trend, but I'm going to put that off until we have a full council. So the other thing I wanted to talk about is when I was campaigning, several people told me that it was a problem for them that the transit bus no longer picked up at their homes, because these are very elderly, somewhat disabled people, and they can't walk the four or five blocks to a bus stop, so it was basically not a useful service for them. So I think that this is an important service for us to provide, because it really helps people stay independent longer, stay in their homes longer. And I believe that the rest of the council is probably in agreement with me, that this is going to, should be a priority for us. So I would just like to formally request that city staff prepare some alternatives for us and see if we can't find a way to reinstate some form of door-to-door pickup.
So thank you, Councilmember Gold. Actually, we were meeting with Brian Albee, I believe, this week to talk about just that subject, so if it pleases the council, maybe we could report back after the meeting with Mr. Albee to determine kind of what some options may be, and then go from there.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gold. Who would like to go next?
I'll jump in. Yeah, it's been so long, I'll try to keep my comments brief. I too attended the Monterey, "League of California Cities" conference. Reminded me how lucky we are in so many ways, but also reminds me how much we have to offer and how the good things that we can do with the benefits that we have. I also attended a couple of preview rides on SMART, which is very exciting, that it's finally getting some traction, so to speak. I'm looking forward to working with SMART to incorporate their services as much as we can to Healdsburg. I've met with Ariel Kelly and with Madam Vice Mayor regarding health action next steps, and we'll be talking about more about that in upcoming meetings. Mayors and councilmen's Legislative Committee has some discussions about actions in Sacramento regarding poll attachments and cellphone service. Met with the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee to talk again, who reiterated the concern about access to transportation options, and also the concern about rising housing costs, and very excited to hear about, they were very excited to hear about the progress that we have in making in terms of transportation and the CHC. Also, nice to see the positive energy with the new director of the Senior Citizen Center. Very glad to see that. I've met with a few folks regarding the development of, well, the development of a makerspace concept within the city, and also with, I met with Colin Carmichael about the status of homeless, regional homeless initiatives in the North County. And that's a good summary of everything.
Thank you.
Glad to be back. It was nice to get a little time off, and I really do like the council chambers. I think I can even hear us a lot better up here, too. Real quick, just the majority of the things that I do council-related, I do put on my city council Facebook page. I'll have pictures and different things like that, so I'll try to keep this a little shorter. On, back in June, I attended with Councilmember Gold the homeless system redesign, which was different agencies that work with homeless and different things. We're trying to figure out, how do we work in the North Bay to help the people that are here? And it's not necessarily just a Healdsburg problem or Cloverdale problem, there's a lot of unincorporated areas, and a lot of the funding tends to go toward Santa Rosa or the big cities. How do we kind of pull that up here? So it was kind of an initial meeting. I don't anticipate I'll be involved in the majority of the meetings until things kind of get sorted out. I think that was the discussion that we had, was that we're going to work out a few of the details and then reconvene, and, you know, when our help is needed. So I'm looking forward to working with them to, you know, continue to streamline the services that are available out there. At my first meeting, as a director on the North Coast Rail Authority up in Yukaya, that was in July, and I have another one this week. I attended the Chamber's Small Business of the Year Awards at Tameb Park, and it's great to see all the local small businesses that are, that day in, day out, work really hard to make the town what it is. And then Vice Mayor Manziel and I took a tour of the geysers with NCPA. NCPA every year hosts legislative staff from Sacramento, and so the majority of the people there were, I mean, they pretty much all lived in Sacramento but worked with various legislators, and take them on a tour. This year was the geysers, and they came back here for a policy summit, where we were able to kind of talk to them about why public power is important, and, you know, the legislative staff is a very important part. It's like our staff, that they, council members, legislators come and go, but the depth of knowledge within the group is pretty impressive. And it was nice to be able to show them why public power is important for small little towns like Healdsburg, and why we should have their attention. Then the next day, I headed down to Murphy's for a tour of the hydro facility that NCPA owns down there, and a power plant. The power plant, basically, it comes from a dam, funnels water through, there are two generators there, and that one power plant generates enough electricity for 250,000 homes. So it was interesting watching, taking a tour of the whole thing. Also had a meeting with our utility director to talk about, down the road, you know, what we can do as a city to get to 100% carbon neutral, different discussions related to things like, you know, potential solar farm on the water ponds, which would help reduce the temperature, might help with some of the green algae issues that we're having out there, and also working with the car dealers about maybe incentives related to electrical vehicles, electric vehicles. So anyway, that's kind of a quick recap of last month. I'm looking forward to getting back into the routine of our council meetings, and thank you very much.
So yeah, there's so much to share, because summer, I don't know if it's because I'm a teacher, but summer always represents a lot of really wonderful time down, but a lot happens even when the city council doesn't meet. And I want to just commend, first of all, our Parks and Rec Department. I just read the status report for July, and I just want to mention, July 4th here, just in the square, all that connection, our community, it was really wonderful to be part of that, and just looking at all the different activities that happen in the summer in our city. And I'm really proud of the Parks and Rec. In particular, I want to mention those summer Sundays in the plaza, and also the Tuesday concert series. I rarely miss them. I love dancing in the park and the movies in the plaza, and Art After Dark has been really interesting, too. I didn't get to attend, but I'm going to be this month. The Senior Center has a whole scene going on now, it's a different culture, I think. It's improving, but it's always been good, but I think that it's great that we have some shifting going on there. And I want to highlight the upcoming celebration of the Latino art and music on August 22nd. And I just want to mention also, the Healdsburg Center for the Arts has this incredible exhibit that I've gone in four or five times now, Eric Castro's photos called Harvester, which is just this amazing exhibit of faces of the people who travel great distances, and in this case, it's all from Mexico, to harvest. And it's coming to that place again, fall's coming, so I recommend you hit that wonderful exhibit right now. It's a beautiful exhibit of the workers' faces and the moments after they complete a harvest pick. Those pictures are beautiful. I also obviously went to some meetings. I went to the Sonoma County Transportation Authority meeting, those are long meetings, there's a lot of exciting things going on there. The SMART train ride I went on. I do attend the Northern Sonoma County Air Pollution Quality District meetings, which are really amping, ramping up. The geysers tour, absolutely. I mean, I just learned so much with my fellow council member regarding that power agency, and it really gave me an understanding after listening to our representative councilman Plasse for, you know, a couple of years, just sharing so much, and then finally getting up there and seeing it, it really gave me even more understanding, and I appreciate. And having time with Director Crowley in the car, I mean, the car rides are important. I mean, as a teacher, when we go to symposiums or conferences, it's when you're in the car. Of course, we have to watch the Brown Act, but just to be in the car with the director of utilities, and just to talk and have that conversation and learn more, so that was really informative for me, and I want to stay on top of that. I also met with Planning Commissioner Edinger regarding the alcohol consumption policy, had a one-on-one with him, and I also met with a local Realtor about the Replay Resorts Mill District plans. From a Realtor perspective, I wanted to understand, so I met with Penelope Montague, I think that's her last name. I know her as Penelope, she's a writer and a poet. So there are lots going on, and I'm just glad that we can come back together, and missing our mayor, of course, but definitely happy to be back together, to get back to work, and just want to thank so much the staff for maintaining all the things that are maintained when the city council doesn't show up. And I think we're going to move on now to our next agenda item, which is city manager report. So do you have a report for a city manager?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Manziel. So Assistant City Manager I Paletti will give a brief overview of the improvements which have been done to the council chambers over the past a month and a half, and just, Heather's done an outstanding job getting this done in a very short amount of time, and so I want to offer my kudos to Heather and her team for, as I mentioned, getting this done, and really, she'll get into the details. What you see in front of you, a lot of it's happened behind the scenes, and she can speak to that.
Thank you. Construction actually began June 20th, and just as of this afternoon, we were still putting on final touches. Many things can be seen, some things cannot be seen. We added acoustic panels to the ceilings and all four walls, whether it be wood or cloth. All of that is to improve the audible clarity. We installed ceiling fans to improve the thermal comfort. For instance, I just increased the speed of the fans up there, because someone was warm. It can also be reversed to provide warmth during the cooler months. All of the finishes were replaced, new carpet and paint throughout. As you notice, most of the chairs are new. We've concealed the electric and data cabling. The thick wood trim around all has the cable hidden inside, and it also has it for the ability, like for instance, to add more cameras or electrical outlets as well, or speakers if we choose to do that. All hidden, hidden. Also, AV upgrades, four cameras. We've moved the screen to the front to make it easier for the public to see. We've added what are called confidence monitors for the council to see and staff to see that may not be at the right angle. We've raised the diaphragm lights. In the past, these lights were actually blocking some of the sound out to you, messing with the audible clarity. Replacement of cabling throughout. Inside our city hall is now an AV room, where we've got, at this point today, three technicians videotaping this. And we've also upgraded the council chamber wireless. And we are, though we're kind of working out some kinks right now, we are streaming wireless to the city's website, and then as of tomorrow morning, the TV channel will get a copy of the video to actually put into circulation for the TV channel. Things to be completed in the future, as soon as October, is the HVAC will be replaced in this room. We're also doing some future window changes. There's a window up there, and right now, there's this really ugly screen on it that darkens it, so the whole goal is to be able during the day to let natural light come in, or there's the cloth covering that we can use, so we're going to clean that up, as well as, there's some lighting issues in here after we've made some changes. It's not as light as we'd like it to be, and so I believe that that's also going to end up being improved around October, when there's about a three-week break. But a lot of really good changes. Thank you.
If I could just clarify, too, there's three people in the control room. There won't always be three people in the control room, we're doing a lot of training, so from an efficiency standpoint, there'll just be one in the future, but we are training everybody up at this point.
You.
And if I could just add to what our Assistant City Manager mentioned, is this has been a goal of councils to be more transparent, and so the intent is to be, being able to televise our meetings or stream them live to our community. That accomplishes part of that goal. To improve the acoustics in this room, I don't see as many people in the audience cupping their hands at this point, so hopefully the sound is better as well. So a lot of these things, which we've been talking about for a number of years, Heather and her team were able to accomplish in a very short amount of time, of course, with council support and allowing us to move forward with those improvements. So it may not look significantly different, but you have really a brand-new council chambers, including the chairs that our audience are sitting in. The other chairs have been here since I think the city hall was open, so hopefully we have more comfortable chairs for everybody to utilize, a much better acoustics. Everybody doesn't have to move their head around to see the overheads, which used to be on the side of the wall, so we wanted to make this a much more pleasant experience for our audience, but the most important is to make it as transparent as possible to our community.
And let me just add that, you know, this is our trial run night, so as far as knowing what we want to do, we're all just trying this tonight. This is our first time that we've sat down and went, there's these huge monitors in front of us, and what's going on? And anyway, we're going to be fine, but I just want you to know that you're more important than the screen in front of me, just know that. It's right there, but I'm going to be focusing on people. This is the town hall, this is our place to convene. It's not just for the city council, as you know, we have lots of public meetings in this room, and I really like it to be a shift in culture, and so from this presiding officer's perspective, it's a good move to try to be more audible, but also visually more available to people that can't come to meetings, and you can certainly watch this and then come in when you know your agenda item's coming up. You don't have to, if you live close enough, you could walk over and say, I think it's about 10 more minutes, and anyway, it's really exciting if we do get to video, I think it'll be nice. And is video happening right now? Are we able to confirm that right now, the public is able to watch this? Am I on screen right now? Is that testing?
We are, we're working out the kinks.
Okay, okay. So anyway, moving on, just want everyone to know, we're really trying to do this right, and we're hoping that you can give us input, and you're enjoying a change, and we're just experiencing all kinds of stuff up here. So with that in mind, we're going to move on to welcoming members of our public, and that should always be the culture of a meeting, is to welcome members of the public, but here we are at the moment of public comment. So these comments are to be made about agenda items that are not on the agenda, and it's also a time to confine it to three minutes. And essentially, when you're acknowledged by me, the mayor, sitting in tonight, please step up to the podium and please speak into the microphone. We've had issues about that. I don't know if you've ever listened to a city council meeting or any meeting held in here, but sometimes it's really hard to hear, so you're really being asked to get close to that mic and speak into it, and we would like you to begin by stating your name clearly and your address, so we can accurately identify your presence here tonight. And I just wondered tonight, how many speakers are going to be speaking on non-agenda items? So I can just get an idea of the number of people, just clarifying. Okay, thank you. All right, well, I would like to welcome a speaker to the podium to address this on non-agenda items. So I recognize Gina, I guess. Thank you.
Good evening, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Gina Reiner, I live on Grant Street, and tonight, I wanted to tell you a little bit about this wonderful new event for Healdsburg. It's called Art After Dark. I saw you slide through, Councilmember Noyokas, and Mayor Sean McCaffrey was the emcee for us. And I want to tell you, it was an extraordinary event for about three reasons. Number one, that we put this event on in 23 business days, and after council approved it on June 19th, and it was because of the extraordinary partnership with the city of Healdsburg, that the Healdsburg Center for the Arts was so successful in producing this event. I'm the event coordinator or organizer for it, and we threw it out on the street, and we kept our fingers crossed, and lo and behold, it was an enormous success with several hundred people passing through. The other reason is Mark Thiemig, Dave Janz, and their staff, they were extremely cooperative. They went above and beyond the call of duty and helped us produce this event. Number three, another reason why it was successful, I think, is that not only did it, it was designed for locals, but there were a lot of tourists that came, and it fulfilled both audiences. They both liked the small-town feel. Food and alcohol were not the main event, art was the main event, visual performing, and that was extremely successful. In a way, it was kind of like an intimate Tuesday on the concert, with the concerts on the plaza, but this time, it was more interactive. So I'm guessing that this is a need that people want, that, I mean, tons of families came through. We had interactive children's art activities as well as entertainment. And next month, August 25th, we're going to be partnering with Corazon Healdsburg to produce a Latino-themed night, and we have a lot of people helping us on this. So I encourage all of you to come to Art After Dark, the next one's August 25th. Thank you.
Welcome, Gail Jonas.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Manziel and city council members. I'm coming with two projects, and I did email you and talk with David McHaleian about them, because I don't like to catch you by surprise. And I just, when I say I want your support, we're trying to be as self-supporting as possible, but it's always nice to know whether or not the city supports this effort. The first one, Harvey Brody, who works with the homeless with their art, every Friday, he meets with them, and they work on art projects, and he was responsible for the display at the Paul Mottler Gallery in May. He and I decided that it's not okay if the homeless are out in the rain this winter. So we have started this project of trying to find temporary shelter just for this winter, knowing that eventually we'll have more permanent housing for them. And to launch this, I'd like to do what Mark Thiemig did with the arts, which is to have a community conversation. So on September 23rd, Saturday between 10:00 and noon, we have the library forum room, and we're inviting the public to come voice their suggestions, voice... and we're inviting the public to come voice their suggestions, voice their concerns. There's often a lot of concern that if you do anything for the homeless, everybody in California will flock here. Those kinds of issues need to be addressed. So by starting with asking the community first and getting their concerns, we can then create something, hopefully, that will work for just this winter, just for the bad weather. And so we also will have a month-long display of Javier, who is homeless. He has incredible photographs, and they will be on a month-long display at the forum room in the library, showing that the homeless have incredible talents too, and sometimes, and hopefully often, the ability to stick with them and create this beauty. So if anybody is interested in helping with this, we are just two individuals doing this. I'm pretty visible. If you would like to help do anything on this effort, you can email me at gail@gailjonas.com. We welcome your support, and we'll take anything, money. We're getting a song dedicated or vintage just for the homeless in Healdsburg to show them that they're special. We have some people working on that, but we have lots and lots of things you can do. The second item is, when I watch my grandson play Little League, practice after practice, game after game, I go, huh, I want to play. But I want to play with people my age. So we are starting an over-60 co-ed. People with hip replacements and shoulder problems and everything else are invited to join a co-ed, eventually softball team. We promised to start with wiffle ball, so that nobody gets hurt or you're not afraid of people. We are going to be called the Prune Pits. And the city is cooperating with this. I've been working with Anna and Mark. And we are starting on September 6th. We have the high school field and a light, so we know we have the cities we support. They're going to get us a tee. So just like going back to when you're five years old, you get to practice with a tee first, we've got it set. And so anybody who is interested in even checking it out, and if you don't want to play ball, I've got pom-poms. You can be a cheerleader. So contact me again at gail@gailjonas.com, and you can show up and then decide it's not for you, or join in and have a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Okay. Welcome.
Hi, I'm George Lawson, 424 Tucker. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the cooperation and partnership that Park and Recreation has given to our Rotary Clubs in doing the Fourth of July celebration, as well as the Wonder League and our summer program for special needs kids. It's really, it's fantastic, the support we're getting from them. And I want to thank them. Second, I have had a little disappointment, actually. I, in my attempt to donate a significant sculpture to the community, the Park, or yes, the Park and Rec Commission did not feel up to the challenge and tabled the decision based on the fact they felt like they needed more direction and about the arts. So, you know, I just want to underline the need for an arts council that is not buried in the commissions. I mean, the commission should be approving projects based on their responsibilities and the effects it has on their areas of responsibility. But we do need an advocacy group that represents the entire community and with a good understanding of the arts and our community needs and wants and desires. And so hopefully, we'll get to that point. Mark Thiemig had a meeting last week to kick that off, and I just want you to support his effort and our effort in trying to get a coherent statement of purpose for the arts in our community and a strategy on how to play that out. Please encourage him to move as quickly as possible, because this is important for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Ted Calvert, 220 Orangewood Drive. And dovetail onto what George is saying, he and I and the sculptor Larry, who's done pieces throughout the United States, have been working on this. And we've had several meetings with the Park and Rec, and we found that they were unable to make a decision. And I look at that from a historical perspective, this art piece, pieces, are going to reflect the heritage, the culture and the history of Healdsburg. And there's no art in Healdsburg that I know of that reflects our heritage and culture. And to miss this train leaving the station opportunity is really, oh, just kind of disappointing, to say the least. And George has been heartfelt on this, and it was going to be private-funded. And a wonderful piece at West Plaza between Berry Public and the Healdsburg Hotel, which is now a big weed pile. So the sooner we can get going on this art council, commission, whatever you want to call it, so we can make decisions and go forward and not lose the opportunity that we just lost. Thank you.
Welcome.
Ken Bucagnani, Porton Lane. I understand there's a plan for a hotel being built on the plaza. And knowing how some of the members on the planning commission vote, it'll probably pass. So if it comes to you, I hope you reject it. Thank you.
Hi.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Vega. I live at 209 Hummingbird Court. And I'm very grateful for the opportunity to share my concerns with you here this evening. And I want to say, I commend you for all of the things that I've been hearing you talk about, that we have a shared value of this wonderful community. And my concern has to do with safety, cleanliness, and the aesthetic beauty and the natural beauty, and preserving it for all of the Healdsburg residents. I recently wrote a letter to the mayor voicing my concern after I had guests in the garden. My house borders the river, and we had to move indoors because the toxic fumes that were coming from the gravel company across the river were so offensive. And my guests were actually feeling ill. And I'm a little bit used to it. I can't say that I'm ever going to be used to it, but I've been struggling with this for the 10 years that I've lived on that bank. But for the sake of brevity and clarity, if I might, please just read the letter that I penned. I won't go into the documentation. I did some research about the toxicity and the standards of the industry. And I shared this with Vice Mayor Bridget, and she has that in her possession. So again, I wrote to, following a phone call addressing my concerns regarding the toxic commissions that were being spewed out, voiced my understanding that there are many pressing issues in Healdsburg, and I know that this is only one. And I applauded his commitment to maintaining the serenity and pristine environment of our Healdsburg home. Regarding the research into the industry's pollution emission standards, there are numerous documents available, which I did share, but they delineated the types and quantities of pollutant emissions that these plants routinely make. And given that our plant is quite old and the machinery they use is noisy and rusty, I do expect that they may not be working to the standards presently required by the more stringent environmental laws in California. It is relevant to note that for every ton of cement that is produced, an equal amount of CO2 is released into the atmosphere. It's very difficult to contain it. I recognize also that growth, building, and concrete go hand in hand. And so if we can't actually make this plant go away, which does seem to be very difficult to make that happen, I do want to encourage the council members and people who have authority to be sure that the emissions are being monitored and reported regularly. I hate to be a person who constantly is complaining. I have voiced my concerns before, and I have received some response. But I would like to suggest that there might be some ways of mitigating, such as planting redwood trees, that would not only help with the sound and the sight and the smell, but also with the absorption of the CO2s they're emitted, that would also increase the shade capacity for our river. And, yes.
May I? Would you be open to me sharing your letter with everybody up here?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then that way, we can really get an understanding, because you did a lot of research. That would be best, if you could accept that as the next step.
I did want to suggest particularly that trees would be a wonderful way to encourage them to maybe mitigate some of the damage that is being done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you. My name is Russ Messing. I'm Healdsburg. I'm Russ Messing. I'm Healdsburg literary laureate, and I wrote a poem called "The Roundabout." You can take a coastal road trip, fish the river for some trout, or putt-putt through the vineyards, but don't count on the roundabout. You can picnic on the beach, you can stomp your heels and shout, maybe if you have an ice cream, you'll forget the roundabout. Have a sticky bun at the Creamery, they're the best, there is no doubt. Then kick back with sports and comics and let go of the roundabout. But if you're in a hurry, need to find a different route, there are backroads to the freeway, no need for that roundabout. This project seems eternal. We sure have that one figured out. Oh, will it ever get finished, our promised roundabout? The costs are ever higher? There's clear cause to rant or pout? But come on, be optimistic. Yes, we'll have our roundabout. Patience is a virtue, that's a saying we might tout, as we drive that old five-way stop that will be our roundabout. But if you're a business owner with flagging sails and little clout hanging on by just a shoestring, you damn this roundabout. Some business are growing down the tubes, struggle on, money almost out, they're surely not applauding this cursed roundabout. Sales are down by half or more, what was promised, a distant shout, flows is out of business from delays to the roundabout. The singles tree struggles on, hey, Healdsburgers, help 'em out. Drop in for some eggs and bacon, no need for, and no need for that roundabout. The contractor has a deadline, and the city has some clout, perhaps some litigation, to make them come about. This problem's a conundrum, would go in circles. Where's the exit out? Patience, threats, some settlement to get us our roundabout? But let's sit back for just a sec, maybe settle on a mount and come to some agreement to finish the roundabout. So hats off to our city council, and okay to the workers, give out a shout. In the end, it'll all be settled. At last, we'll have our roundabout. Round and round and round we go, patience, anger, hope and doubt. But someday, or at least some year, we'll rejoice in the roundabout. Oh, one more thing. Sorry that I'm late, but I forgot, I took my usual route and got caught in that crazy quilt of our someday roundabout.
Thank you, Russ. It just cuts to the truth. It speaks the truth. Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that would like to have a moment for this opportunity to make a public comment on non-agenda items? All right, I'm going to close public comment now and move on. It's quite a segue. Thank you. I'm just going to remark again, I'm a fan and I love poetry. So that was a nice transition. Thanks for being here. Thanks, everybody, for being here and for sharing. We're moving on now to our next item, which is the consent calendar. Excuse me, the consent, let me get the right word. Yeah, consent calendar. And before I say much more about that in terms of asking for a motion to approve it, there is a need for us, according to the Brown Act, and it's because of a court case, that we need to provide an oral report on any action of our executive compensation, which basically means we did some labor negotiations. And in order for us to be in compliance with the new state laws, we need to share with you exactly what's going on, which makes sense to me. So here it is. This is an oral report of summary of recommendation for final action on agency executive salaries forward slash compensation. As required by newly enacted California Government Code, Section 54953, the following is an oral report summarizing the recommended final action on the salaries, salary schedules, and fringe benefit compensation for the city's executive employees. The proposed resolutions included with Agenda Item 6K include the following recommended changes in compensation for exempt at-will executive classifications and the city manager. Changes in compensation for executive classifications. One, effective June 11th, 2017, a cost-of-living salary increase of 3.4%, effective July 1st, 2018, a cost-of-living salary increase equivalent to the Bay Area Consumer Price Index, but no less than 3% and no more than 4%. Effective July 1st, 2019, a cost-of-living salary increase equivalent to the Bay Area Consumer Price Index, but no less than 3% and no more than 4%. And effective July 1st, 2017, the city's contribution toward health insurance shall be a dollar amount up to 100% of the lowest-cost medical plan, not including Sutter ML19 by premium category. For those employees that select a more expensive medical plan, the difference between the city's contribution and the actual premium of the plan selected shall be paid by the employee on a pre-tax basis. Changes in compensation for city manager. One, effective July 9th, 2017, a cost-of-living increase of 3.4%. Two, linking medical benefits to those of the executive management group rather than the mid-management group. And three, replacing the monthly automobile allowance with a monthly management incentive in the same amount. So that is the language of the law for you to know about this compensation that has been agreed to with our executive salaries. And with that in mind, I just want everyone to now focus back to the consent calendar. And again, we need to have an approval of this calendar and basically entertaining an invitation for a motion here. Is there any item to be removed from the calendar?
We removed item N as a Nancy earlier, by your action.
Okay, thank you. So with the exception of N, are there any other concerns about any of the other items on the consent calendar?
Seeing none, I'll move to accept the consent calendar, as is, with the aforementioned exclusion of item N.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, this requires a roll call.
Okay.
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
Thank you.
And we're moving now to item seven, which is a public hearing. And this is a public hearing to discover or to consider a land use code amendment. And it's an amendment to our municipal code, and it has to do with alcohol beverage establishments and definitions and land use tables. So we're going to have a presentation from, I believe, planner.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mansell. So interim planning and building director, Derosa, will be giving a brief introduction and then handing it off to our senior planner.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Mansell, members of the city council. Planning Department is very excited to bring you this ordinance. It has been in the making for the last 18 months, starting with joint discussions with the planning commission, the council, you may recall. I would also like to take this opportunity to commend the work of senior planner Craig Tamborini, because without his steadfastness to navigate the complexities of ordinance work as it is, and to continue his outreach with the stakeholders and the community, we wouldn't be here today. So kudos to Craig. And he's the subject master, and so I will be letting him deliver the presentation, and we are both available to answer questions at the close of the hearing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Mayor, council member, or Vice Mayor, council members, as you know, as we've just discussed before, each night's a recommended action on an ordinance to amend the land use code regulations governing alcohol beverage establishments within the city. And we're recommending that you review these draft revisions, take public comment, and introduce the ordinance for first reading by title only, waiving reading of the text. And we are both available to answer questions at the close of the hearing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Maya. Mayor, council member, or Vice Mayor, council members. As you know, as we've just discussed before, each night's a recommended action on a ordinance to amend the land use code regulations governing alcohol beverage establishments within the city. And we're recommending that you review these draft revisions, take public comment, and introduce the ordinance for first reading by title only, waiving reading of the text. So by way of background, just to give you, again, tearing off of what Maya said to give you an update on where we are today and how we got here. Last April, we met with the council to receive some additional direction regarding some changes that we're proposing to make to this ordinance. Those changes were reflecting previous commission and council direction that staff had received. And it was building off of research that staff had done as well to come up with some proposed revisions that we believed met with the council's direction and intent. And we got confirmation that we were going in the right direction. So we prepared revised ordinance for the commission to take a look at. The ordinance, in its essence, will maintain the same mix of retail services and uses that are allowed within the downtown area. It will not change uses per se. It's really meant to provide some additional regulatory control over the alcohol beverage service establishment industry. So the past actions we've taken the last year and a half, again, we met with the, the city council and the Planning Commission met together in January 2016 and discussed this topic. The council met, is meeting tonight, and of course, met in April. The Planning Commission then had two public hearings themselves on the draft ordinance revisions. And on June 13th, they reviewed the ordinance, provided some direction to staff. And then we brought them back, revised ordinance with revisions on July 11th. And that's what's before you tonight. We also had an informational meeting with public stakeholders in between our two meetings with the Planning Commission. And we had three industry representatives attend. We also had sent notices out to every property owner within the downtown area because the ordinance revisions were proposing some changes to permitted land uses, which I'll get into a little bit later in my presentation. But we did not receive any reaction or negative reaction or comment in general from property owners. So we're taking that as a sign that everyone seems to be satisfied with the direction we've gone and what we presented to you tonight. Just by way of quick summary of what the ordinance has changed. It's very simple, very precise, very specific changes that we've made. Principally, we've been working under this one-per-block-face dispersion policy as a guideline to regulate wine tasting rooms in the downtown. That's been something that's been going on for quite a while. I believe since about 2005, we've been using that as a policy guideline to have some criteria to review new wine tasting rooms in downtown. When we talked to the commission, the city council in April, we talked about expanding that policy to include all establishments that are meant for, primarily for serving alcohol. So that would include bars and cocktail lounges. So wine, beer, bar, and spirit, serving that as a primary component of the use. And tasting rooms would all be subject to this dispersion policy. Restaurants would still, with a bar, would still be exempt. The council also had, we also talked about adding an exception, some exception language in the, in the policy. If we're going to apply a standard that we currently don't have, we thought it prudent to have a way, an out potential if it made sense. And so we came up with some very specific language to allow an exception only in the case where there might be an existing establishment that has closed or been discontinued, that's on a block, where a new facility's proposed. We're offering the opportunity for the Planning Commission to grant an exception in that case. And then we could determine how we want to move forward, want to revoke the old use permit or allow it to remain discontinued indefinitely. Additionally, the Planning Commission had a couple of other items they wanted us to include. One was prohibiting uses, new uses along East Street and Piper Street. Those are the streets that are directly abutting residential neighborhoods. And so we've included that in the draft ordinance. And we've included some additional language to regulate events and accessory uses. Those aren't, that are currently not defined in the ordinance. And this would give us some additional, or set some additional requirements for an applicant to list the events they want to conduct and include that as part of their use permit application. And last but not least, we clarified a number of definitions in the code to give some direction that previously did not exist. And that's with regard to wine tasting, tasting rooms, and alcohol beverage establishments in particular. So just to give you the reference on where this ordinance primarily affects the city businesses, and that's in the downtown districts of Heelsburg. The one-per-block-face dispersion policy will apply in all of the CD and the Plaza Retail districts. So that's the most significant addition to the code, the most significant change, it does affect review use permits in this, in this area. Outside of the downtown, it's worth noting that tasting rooms are not permitted except if ancillary to an industrial winery use or to a mixed-use alcohol beverage service establishment in the mixed-use district. So in the, in the service retail districts up Heelsburg Avenue, you currently cannot have a tasting room. And we didn't change that. That still remains the case today. So that concludes the bulk of my presentation. Of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. And I'll leave you with, again, the recommendation, which is to review the draft revisions, conduct a public hearing, and introduce for first reading by total only the ordinance amending the Heelsburg Municipal Code. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any clarifying questions from the council before we open it to public comment?
Yeah, yes, I do have two. One question regarding the exception for the discontinued use. What, so if there's a discontinued use, I guess inactive discontinued, an exception is allowed for, for an additional use. What happens if the owner attempts to revive if the discontinued, the original discontinued use?
If, in that scenario, in that situation, if someone had, let's just say, a tasting room that was an 800-square-foot tasting room with a bar area with eight seats, and then it's become a nail salon, and then he comes back and says, I want to reopen this tasting room. He could propose to reestablish exactly what he had previously. And he would not need a new use permit to do that if he, if he adhered to the prior conditions of approval. He would, of course, need a new alcohol beverage license from the State Department of Alcohol Beverage Control, but he would only need a business license from the city and a building permit to make any tenant improvements.
Let me just clarify. So any changes to that project description, expansion, hours, those types of things would trigger a new review process?
But as long as you stuck to the original, then we could potentially have two per block face.
That's correct, yes.
And then can you, I'm sorry, can you clarify the outside of the downtown business district? You mentioned the clarifications for what tasting rooms are current, are, what conditions allow for a tasting room outside of the downtown business district?
So you, there's two types of businesses that typically pursue tasting rooms, and that's wineries or alcohol, or distilleries or breweries. In the industrial district, oftentimes, they'll have tasting as an ancillary use. And so those are the industrial districts. That's permitted with a use permit. And then in the mixed-use district, similarly, if you have a alcohol beverage manufacturing facility, small, a smaller type scale use such as, similar to what Sonoma Cider has in operation, you can do a tasting room with that as well. And that would need a conditional use permit. So those two locations outside of downtown are other locations where you can have a tasting room.
And each of those requires a CUP?
Correct, yes. In all instances, it requires a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I'd just like a little more explanation on that particular example. So if, if someone ceases to operate their space as a tasting room and it has some other use, and somebody else opens on the same block face, hasn't that privilege sort of been transferred to the new user?
No, it has not, because the use, use permit approval runs with, with the land.
With the land.
So it would, it would continue to exist. So we could pursue revocation. If the city desires to spend energy in that direction, we could go through a process of provoking that through a hearing. But that's what it would take.
Thank you. Yeah, may I ask if this map is ever, this is in the public's hand right now, if they wanted to see this map that's part of our?
Yes, that's part of the packet.
So it's not something we can put up necessarily?
I, well, no, I don't have it in my PowerPoint.
This one is the one I was thinking would be helpful, but no?
I might have it in a.
It's super colorful.
Hideous slides.
Constructive.
They're with me, and I'll see.
Because it does show in a pretty explicit way the discontinued uses, which means that the CUPs are there for that, for that landowner to, if, as long as they follow what they originally were going to do or replicate that. So I just wondered if you had that, but it doesn't.
There it is. Yes, I have it, and there you have it.
Okay. So that, that's pretty good to just be able to see what we have. Any questions, please?
My questions are still along the same lines as Councilmember Nayokas, just understanding, so the yellow boxes are the ones that are basically dormant. So an example would be where prohibition used to be, that now is a hair salon. So as I understand it, what you're saying is if the building owner decided to come in and say the hair salon, you know, moved on, and they said, all right, we want to do something else, it has to be pretty much exactly the same as what prohibition was there? Their use, ours?
Same hours, same limitations, right? The same, exact same operating conditions would have to be adhered to in order to reestablish.
Now, if they came in and said, our tenant's gone. We've got another tasting room. We want to go from eight to 10, which now triggers a review. Is it an automatic denial because of the one per block? Or are they grandfathered in and they just go through the process and have an opportunity to lease to another tenant?
They would have an opportunity to come in and ask to amend their use permit. So they would have that opportunity to amend it. It would have to be, of course, then going to be reviewed against the same list of standards. And it's hard to say whether or not they'd be warranted a change. But yes, they would have the opportunity.
So they have a shot.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to open up to public comment now. So we invite you to come if you have any questions or any comments. Please, thank you.
Hello. My name is Nancy Beacon. I live on Brown Street. And I just, it just appears to me that there's an unfair burden on tasting rooms. It seems like what we want is diversity downtown, which I wholeheartedly support. But why is the wine industry having to be the one that has to do the heavy lifting for that? Has anyone been out there and counted real estate offices lately? That, to me, is a very unbalanced number of businesses downtown. People flock to Heelsburg for many reasons, one of which is our world-renowned wine. I don't know anyone that is flocking to Heelsburg for our world-renowned realtors. And so I just feel that this is an unfair burden. I think diversity is a great thing downtown. But I just think that the tasting rooms are being asked to share the brunt of that or to bear the brunt of that. And I just, you know, I don't understand why they are considered the same as bars, because bars are open till 2:00 in the morning. And your intent to go in there is to drink. And to go to a tasting room is a much different experience. And they close at 7:00. Some of them close at 4:00. So it isn't the same kind of environment as a bar. So I just think the comparisons that are being made and the consideration of this is, I just don't think they're fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. Yes. Welcome.
Thank you. Marilyn Joyce. So just listened to the last speaker, and I, I think the answer is, it's not a moral one. It's that tasting rooms are, they, they raise the rents in that block. So they are replacing local businesses. I don't think that a real estate office is going to get the same rent from their, you know, the same rate from their landlord. I would encourage the city to pursue, as was mentioned, the revocation of existing but expired conditional use permits. I think that it's an opportunity that we shouldn't let go by. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. So I'm going to close public comment now.
Move to close?
We need a motion to close. Pardon me?
Move to close.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of closing?
Aye.
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 So, yeah, I think that it's time now to chime in on this. This has been a process. So I'm going to invite my fellow council members to speak. And who would like to go first?
I'll jump in. Yeah, well, so, listen, I'm very, it's funny, the, the, the comment about real estate offices actually is very poignant to me. I feel very, very much the same way that there is, I, I, you look at the use of that land as, we don't have that much space. And I like to see the maximization of that space and that we do have in areas that are useful to people. However, it is, it's, it's, it's tough not to, not to pick on any particular business. Now, how do you, there's a risk of over-engineering the, our land use. However, I think, I think there's plenty of room for discussion about maybe revisiting land use in general, especially in the downtown district. Maybe talking about, I don't know, some kind of inclusionary retail. I don't, something interesting like that. But as far as the tasting rooms are concerned, I think that it's one of those, you know, you know it, you know something's wrong when you see it. And I think a lot of the, there's a very strong sense in the community that, and that there is, that there is too much, that it is an over-concentration. And I think having this over-concentration of alcohol tasting rooms, I think that having this specific guidance would help to kind of clarify the position and we establish it, we move on, and we, and we can, and we can live with it. I'm concerned about the, about the exceptions for discontinued. But again, I've read the, the comments from our Planning Commission, and I think they, they had some very strong feelings about it. I tend to, I want to respect their, their professional input as well. I'm okay with leaving that in. So I think those are my feelings.
Councilor Gold?
Well, I think our goal here is that we're trying to maintain a balance between our very successful local wine industry. Well, we want to promote that and make that available to visitors. But we also want to avoid a commercial monoculture. We want to have other types of businesses also that are going to offer something for people who are not interested in wine tasting. Maybe they want to shop. So I think that this policy has been successful in maintaining at least some degree of balance in downtown. And I think it makes a lot of sense to codify it and continue it. And we can consider other tweaks in the future. But I think this is a good first step. So I'm in support of it.
Councilor Hagley?
Yeah, I took a look at this. You know, I don't like trying to put, you know, trying to eliminate specific business or trying to social engineer things downtown and that. But when I take a look at this and what we have now and what's being proposed, and really, we've been working under what, it seems to be working. I trust our Planning Commission. We have a very solid Planning Commission that these things get vetted through. And, you know, we've had this kind of soft rule of one-per-block-face. And, you know, when this first came through, my initial reaction is, no, we can't, you know, it, it's too dangerous. I'm concerned about, you know, the retail environment is changing. You don't go downtown. I mean, you read all the time, people, I can't buy socks downtown. Well, pretty soon, nobody's going to be buying socks, even at Macy's or JCPenney, because they're buying them on Amazon. So the retail's changing. Retail isn't where you're necessarily going to shop. It's, it's starting to evolve into where you're hanging out, and it's more social. So with those changes in mind, I look at this and, once I started going into it and looking at what we have now, so based on the report, we have 30 tasting rooms in town. And we have 34 block faces. And 12 of those don't have tasting rooms on them right now. And we're proposing to eliminate six of those block faces, which face residential, which makes sense. Nobody wants people stumbling out into their yard. So when you do the math, we theoretically, if these other conditional use permits never get revived or somehow go away, we're down to 28 block faces. That's 28 tasting rooms. So we're about where we are now. I think we have a pretty good balance. I personally don't think we have too many tasting rooms downtown. My wife and I like going wine tasting. I was at a great event at Bar &amp; Diva yesterday where there were probably 30 wineries, local small wineries, that were pouring. And it was a great event and a lot of people there. So I actually enjoy that. So for me. So for me, I, I think the staff did a really good job. I like the idea of kind of combining the different uses, you know, redefining from wine tasting to basically alcohol-related, so that we have a little bit more clarity when it comes to if somebody wants to open a brew pub or, you know, beer tasting or spirits tasting or something like that. It's a little bit clearer, like, okay, no, that's still alcohol. On the exception, kind of made reference to it earlier, you know, the dormant ones, I, I do, no matter what, we're, I always want to be careful what we do when times are good in anticipation of when times are bad. And as long as there's an opportunity that with the very strict rules, that a building owner could, if they lose their tenant, can go out and now, you know, like they said, if it was an eight-seat tasting room, you get that exact one back, you have a shot of going through the process and leasing out your space. I'm comfortable with that. So based on what's here, I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Okay, and I, I'm just really pleased that we have something. And when I joined the council, it was one of my issues for sure to look at what we could do to create. I remember sitting on the committee to select a planning commissioner with a council member. And one of the questions was this, what is the policy? And it was case by case was the answer. That was the answer. And I thought, well, that is the answer, but it's not being employed that way. And certainly with, you know, the Mott effect, if you will, you know, my vote on that, if some of you remember, I mean, that street certainly is not one per block face and it gets into the conditional use permit. And that process makes it really muddy, but in its subjective. And even looking at the minutes that the planning committee, commission talked about, you can in fact take a conditional use permit and recall it at the planning commission level for, for more reasons than, than just there's another one on the block, you've, you know, you're entering. But it could be because there are complaints. And that's the part that was helpful for me in looking at the draft. There's been a lot of thought that went into this. And I think that I'm just pleased that something's happening and that we do have a policy that is, that is going to be enforceable. There's always subjectivity in this town. It's a small town. There's people that are smart, that come to the table and they have things they want to say. And, and there's people that will make decisions based on personality and who they know. And, and that's life, that's politics. But I do think in this particular area, as a council member, I really feel that alcohol is a problem in our, in our city. And I'm glad to say it explicitly. I think that when we listen to the art, Gina's report about, you know, Friday night arts, I mean, no alcohol is there. It's not the focus. People don't come to this town to spend their money only on wine. I disagree. People that come to this town come because there's a small-town character and they like doing local activities. They don't come to just drink. And the ones that do drink and only drink are not necessarily the ones that maybe some of us feel we want to contribute to. Perhaps it's because my mother's an alcoholic. I don't know, but I just don't really feel like alcohol is the focus here. So I'm really excited that we've made a step and we're creating a code that at least puts it in writing and isn't this, well, case by case, we'll check it out. I know the planning commission does a great job of looking at certain cases. I mean, and look at the language, saturated, case by case, tipping point. There's so much alcohol flow in everything we say, our verbs even penetrate. It just, it's an interesting time right now for us, our city. I'm really happy with where we're going with this in terms of getting the exact language that we need to say one per block face. And I have no problem looking at it in the future and maybe seeing when we have other developments such as the Mill Street District, which Chap or whatever we're going to call that area now. I mean, there's certainly different areas after we get the roundabout figured out where we're going to have all these opportunities for tourists to come up here and enjoy things other than drinking. Of course, the wine will be there, you guys, it'll be there, okay? But we have to have some kind of a policy, in my opinion, that is going to guide our planning commission. And I've heard numerous times from planning commission members that they want a code that they can follow. So I'm so thankful to the staff for providing that. And I really have no problem adopting exactly what this is and, and supporting this as it is. I like the definition, the glossary terms. I know we did this in that housing committee where we went through and we looked at defining the terms. And what is a wine bar versus a wine tasting room versus walking in and tasting beer? I mean, it's all pretty much the same thing, you know? And people come in and they want to taste the product. And, and you know, no one wants anyone stumbling around, whether I'm on East Street or not. I don't want to see people stumbling in my town and using pocket parks to, you know, vomit. I mean, no offense, but I've seen it and, and I really don't want that. Not just because it doesn't look good, but because I don't think it shows that's the kind of town we want to be. I think we're a town that participates in health-oriented issues too and not just getting trashed. So I really support this and I, I'm not against tasting rooms as much as I'm for a, a code that will support our future and help our planning commission to have a cohesive understanding of what this council wants. So I'm eager to support this tonight and to see it as a step in the direction of creating a code that will support health in our city and balance. And also hopefully create more dialogue about what we actually value and where we want to go with all this success. Because we have success. We have people that want to come here. What are we doing with them when they're here? And that's a whole nother question, but it's, it's a vision, you know? What do we want our, our tourists to do when they're here with us? And there's plenty to do other than taste wine. So I, I want to taste wine, but it's not the only thing. So I can support this for sure. And I would, I love the formalizing of a policy. So is there a motion or are we ready to vote or is there more to talk about?
If no one has other comments, I will offer for first reading by title only in ordinance to the City Council, the City of Hillsburg, amending Hillsburg Municipal Code Section 20 dot 20 dot 075, Alcohol Beverage Establishments, Chapter 20 dot 08, Land Use Tables, and Section 20 dot 28 dot 310 definitions.
Second.
By, I'll, I'll support that if, I'd like to amend that to suggest that you, that we waive reading of the text as well.
Very good. And waive reading, reading of the text.
So I have an amend, I have a motion and a second. So all those in favor and we'll have to do a roll call vote. Thank you.
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Nayokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
That, that one is, is now gone forward. Thank you. So that was the end of Agenda Item 7, which is the public hearing regarding a land use code amendment for the municipal, or for alcoholic beverage establishments. All right, so we're now in line to go to Agenda Item 8, which is old business. And this concerns utility pole attachment fees for communication service providers. And I believe we're going to hear from Utility Director Crowley. Thank you.
Good evening, council members. Before you tonight, we have a recommended action and there's several items in there, but I'll go through this to kind of get things started off. Starting with the recommended actions is rescinding Resolution Number 1172015. That's the previous resolution that set pole attachment rates. Also approving the utility pole attachment rates as proposed as we'll go through this discussion and related one-time fees. Directing that the substantive terms of the future pole attachment agreements be consistent with the master license pole attachment agreement. That's the agreement that was established a couple of years ago to define the terms and conditions of access to the city's poles and delegating authority to the city manager to execute pole attachment agreements with communication service providers consistent with the master license pole attachment agreement. So to give a little bit of background, the city has power poles throughout town to provide electric system service. Communication providers as well as PG&E have attachments to the city's utility poles. Under Assembly Bill 1027, there's a processes outlined for establishing pole attachment fees for communication service providers. So these fees only apply to communication service providers. On June 19, 2017, the city council was presented with the proposed pole attachment fees for comment and discussion. Under the 1027, maybe 1027, the city council must wait at least 30 days after the initial presentation of the rates before taking action to adopt pole attachment fees. So we've waited that at 30 days and now we're bringing this item back in front of council for final adoption. After adoption, the fees will go in place after 60 days. So there's again, another waiting period before those fees will actually be applied and, and build out to communication service providers. So some general information about utility poles. So currently have separate agreements with PG&E, AT&amp;T, and Comcast for attachments to the city utility poles. Those agreements will stay in place until 2018. And these, these agreements won't be affected by the attachment rates, but any new providers or Sonic, who is currently under the AB 1027 laws, would be affected by these rates. Cost of maintaining utility poles are shared between the attachers. So if there's a benefit of being attached to the pole, there's a cost that's associated with that and the city allocates those costs to these attachers. Space and strength requirements are set by the California Public Utility Commission. That's basically design and construction standards that the city has to follow to be compliant with safety rules of the state. And there's other applicable requirements as well. OSHA, safety requirements, those types of things. But in general, poles are shared in different ways and there's a cost allocation for sharing those. So pole attachment fees, in summary, so AB 1027 allows a recovery of annual ownership costs. So ownership costs can come in the form of maintenance costs, can also come in the form of capital costs, so such as depreciation. So we have an asset value that depreciates, that's a cost that can be measured financially. Maintenance costs incur annually and they're typically like inspection cost or cost to maintain those records or just these kind of administrative overheads that reoccur on an annual basis, but aren't linked to establishing new physical plant or replacing of existing physical plant. Costs are based upon the city's current asset values and maintenance costs. And then the annual cost of ownership is spread proportionally to the communication companies, the attachers that are sharing the poles with the city based upon the pole's capacity. One-time fees are recovered to review and accept new attachments. So if there's a new application, there's a fee to review that application. It doesn't necessarily apply to the attachments, the ongoing annual cost or capital cost of the, of the poles. So under the allocation that this, this staff is proposing, it falls with AB 1020 assumption that there's based upon 1970s cost allocations. The bill allows some factual rebuttal or the contesting of those 1970 assumptions. So the city looked at its pole inventory, looked at the average size of communication attachments, the average size of poles and, and found that it didn't match the assumptions that were established in 1970 for the cost allocation. Therefore, it wouldn't create an accurate or fair cost allocation of pole attachment fees. So to fairly recover the cost of, to provide pole attachments, the city developed a cost allocation based upon allowable design strengths rather than solely upon physical pole space. So there's a physical limit to how much cable you can put in the air on a pole. And, and that isn't limited by space. So that's the fallacy in the, in the 1970s FCC allocation that the city is rebutting. In any case, AB 27 doesn't allow the subsidizing communication service providers. So what the city staff has been very cautious about is not subsidizing those cost attachment rates or creating rates that are too low to recover the fair cost of providing that service. If we didn't recover an adequate amount of money, electric payers in the city would have to pay more money, therefore subsidizing the communication service providers. So with all that said, you go through the cost allocation, attachment fees, the city's total annual operating cost to maintain poles, to accommodate the depreciation of the existing capital plan is $230,000 roughly per year. There's 122, or there's 1,222 poles and then you come up with an average cost per pole of 189. That cost is allocated based upon the strength that a particular size of cable attachment would impose upon a pole. So the larger cable that you put on there, it's going to put more of a strength requirement on that pole, therefore consuming more of the capacity of that pole. So if you have the larger conductor that you put on a pole or larger cable you put on a pole, you're going to pay a higher fee for that one attachment. Just for comparison perspectives, you can see these rates for the city's attachments. They range depending on the size from very small to $15 for attachment to a very, very large cable attachment, two and a half inches to $47 per attachment. Average attachment in the city is between one inch to one and a half, so 21 to 30. For other publicly-owned utilities, just as a reference point, not to represent what's right or wrong, but to more represent what the range of cost allocations or attachment fees are through the state. And not as a reference of what the right methodology is or wrong methodology is, but just as a reference point, these are fees that are throughout the state that other publicly-owned utilities have assessed their cable attachment and communication service providers. So you can see there's a wide range there. And it gives you a reference that maybe the city's right in the, in the same ballpark as there. One-time fees, again, one-time fees are associated with, with new attachments to recover application fees, engineering and design verification to make that, sure that that attachment won't overload the pole, there's an existing capacity. If the pole needed to be replaced, there will be a cost associated with the replacement of that pole. And so these are fees that just recover those one-time costs. You'll note on here that the last three fees are per project. So on larger projects or project cost rearrangements, it's really not knowing what that specific cost will be until we actually know what the attachment is and what the facility is that we're going to be attaching to. So those are per project, but they'll be based on the city's standard labor rates as well as inventory costs for material. So a few examples to give some context. So on the average pole, the city is still going to pay the largest portion of the attachment cost. So the city's cost for any average pole in town is going to be $99. Comcast, whose typical cable attachment is about one and a half inch, they're going to pay $30 per year. This is an annual cost. Sonic's one-inch cable, they would pay $21 per year for an attachment. AT&amp;T typically runs a larger conductor and cable size, therefore they consume more of the pole's capacity or available strength to hold the poles, to hold the attachments up. Their fee would be $37 per fee, per year under the proposed fee. So again, recommended action is, is up here. And then if council has any questions, I'd be willing to entertain those at this point in time.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Director Crowley? Yes.
Just me?
Councilman Nayokas, go.
A question about the other publicly-owned utilities that, that the dollar amounts that you gave, was that, did they not comment, include the cable diameter in their calculations?
So some of them use space. Most of them use space as a cost allocation for them. They have different methodologies based upon what they perceive as what's the available space on the pole. So if they assume four feet's available space, they're going to have a different divider for how they allocate that cost per pole. Some of them assume that there's more space, that there's 13 and a half feet of space or there's 20 feet of space. And, and that's what they've used as their divisor. Other utilities have used strength. I don't believe any of these utilities that are listed up here have used strength. But looking at how to fairly allocate cost based on what the impact to the pole is, what, you know, that size of cable consumes of that pole's strength and capacity, it seemed that the wind loading was the best methodology and the fairest methodology to go with.
Yeah, makes sense to me too. I'm just wondering, yours, your, your methodology makes a lot, a lot more sense than, than a simple space calculation. So yeah.
I, I would have to agree with you on that.
And then my other question, I guess more of a lean more towards the legal side is what would be, what potential threats or risks do we have or what kind of, what kind of challenges could we, could we expect to see or maybe come around the bend based on our, our methodology?
Well, we've already seen challenges. And, and so the statute sets a fee, which as Terry pointed out, is based on a set of assumptions. The statute says that essentially if these assumptions don't apply to you, these assumptions create a rebuttable presumption and you can rebut it based on facts, which is what we have done. And so our task is to rebut it in a way that is most defensible. And we've spent a lot of time doing that here, coming, because we understand that our methodology differs from the statute, we've spent a lot of time making sure that methodology is defensible. So we could have challenges, but we So we could have challenges, but we feel pretty confident that it would stand up to challenges.
I have a comment, too, or a question in the fiscal impact. It says, "Under the proposed pole attachment fees, the annual revenues are estimated at $79,000 per year, and that would be an equivalent cost recovery." So that's something also that you're suggesting, we're not making money off of this as much as we're just keeping things.
No, in all the rate settings that the city does, we're not here to profiteer. So we're not a for-profit company. We're here to fairly recover the cost to provide the service. And so what we feel that we've done is developed a rate methodology and a set of rates that fairly recover the city's cost to provide those services to the communication service providers.
The variances of our poles, I mean, is that an issue? That's where it took so much time to kind of look at all the different ways that we can have people attach?
Yeah, I think the variance of our poles is a little bit different. And then I think what Sam mentioned earlier, the city attorney mentioned earlier, is that we've spent quite a bit of time looking at the methodology, rehashing that methodology, going through it, and with a fine-tooth comb, and making sure that it is the most defensible policy that we could come up with. And also coming up with something that's repeatable. That's the idea when you do cost causation and setting up rates, you try to find up something that's just and reasonable. Doesn't have to be perfect, but it has to be justifiable, and it has to be reasonable to the service that you're providing.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question. So this is related to poles specifically, but as development happens and poles go underground, we've got, I'm assuming then these fees would go away, so if three poles get buried, and then how is the city, are there any maintaining costs with the undergrounded? Or once it's underground, you really don't, there's the expenses?
So typically with undergrounding projects, the communication service providers will be participants in those joint trenches, and they'll install their own conduits. And then once they install their own conduits, they fill those conduits with their own wire, and they're on their own, basically. They share the cost of opening that trench, and they installed their own conduits in that at their cost, and then they kind of move forward. So developers typically pay for all those underground conduits and boxes, and then the communication service providers will come back and play those. As those poles go away, that capital asset will disappear from these pole attachment fees, and the city's maintenance cost to provide those will disappear. So you should see these fees at least shrink a little bit.
Any other questions? All right, we're, I think, at a place, do we open this? Okay, thank you. So now this is time for public comment on the issue of utility pole attachment fees. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter? Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Dane Jasper with Sonic. I want to thank Terry and David for the work on this. Obviously, they've put a lot of time into coming up with a good methodology. I just had a couple of questions I wanted to address, and I think these are probably questions for Terry. In regards to pole replacement, if a pole is overloaded in place as it sits today, who pays for the replacement of that pole in order to resolve that?
Excuse me, if we could go through all the questions, Terry can make a copy of those, go through the public comment section, and then at counsel's desire, if Terry could then answer all the questions at the end of the public comment.
Okay, so we're tracking these questions. So the first question.
All right, I have three questions. So one is pole replacement cost. The second is, the city's agreement with Comcast and AT&amp;T, I believe expires in 2018. How will AT&amp;T and Comcast rates be set at that point? In other words, will they just automatically go to these new rates, or do we have to go through this process again? So I'm wondering what the machination of that is. And then the third question is, do these rates escalate over time? Do we have to revisit this every year or every five years, or is this a fixed rate? So that's it for my questions. You know, we'd certainly like to see these rates be as efficient as possible. The rates in Healdsburg under this new methodology are substantially higher than every other city in Sonoma County. But, you know, aside from these questions, I don't have a specific objection to bring the council, and I would recommend that you accept these rates.
Thank you. The other public comments on the utility pole attachment fees. Okay, I think we're finished, and we're possible to have those questions answered if possible?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So if a pole's overloaded, typically the city would pay to replace that pole. We don't, from a reliability standpoint, for the city's electric system, we want stout poles, we want poles that are going to stay up in a windstorm so that we don't have a lot of storm damage. If we found a pole that was overloaded because of an illegal attachment, an illegal attachment is somebody like AT&amp;T or Comcast attaching to the pole without notifying the city ahead of time. It happens from time to time, paperwork gets missed or a step gets missed. If that illegal attachment caused the overload, then we would go back to that communication service provider and have them pay for that replacement. The second question was that Comcast and AT&amp;T, their existing agreements expire in 2018. At that time, Comcast and AT&amp;T would be subject to these pole attachment fees if they chose to not discuss the joint pole association with the city, and we've discussed that at the previous meeting. But more than likely, they would fall under the AB 1027 pole attachment rates. Is there an escalation over time for these rates? No, there's not an escalation over time for these rates. Couple reasons. One, we don't see the rates changing substantially. We will probably need to check in with counsel over, you know, a three- to five-year period to make sure that we're still in the ballpark with those rates. But the other thing, too, is in AB 1027, it talks about any type of automatic change or inflation. Those things still need to come back to counsel for approval. So it didn't seem very clear in the language that you could have an escalator in those rates. So it's not included in the recommendation they have in front of you.
You, Director Crowley, very much for that. So any more comments or discussion here?
No, I think it's pretty clear. I think the methodology is very straightforward, and it makes perfect sense to me. I can't imagine any other way to slice and dice this. So I am perfectly happy moving that we adopt the resolution, rescinding Resolution 1172015, approving utility pole attachment fees and related one-time fees, that's pretty the whole thing, directing that the substantive terms of future pole attachment agreements be consistent with the master license pole attachment agreement, and delegating authority to the city manager to execute pole attachment agreements with communication service providers consistent with the master license pole attachment agreement.
Second? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So it's a roll call vote.
Counselor McGold?
Yes.
Counselor Haggerty?
Yes.
Counselor Neokis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes.
Point of order, I just want to clarify, I see other resolutions. Is that all encompassing, then? We're done with pole attachment fees? Okay, I'm just looking, there's three different things there, so I'm just getting clarification. Thank you. All right, thank you very much, Director Crowley, for all the work, and again, for having the interest at, you know, for the utility payers, and also just to look at the methodology and be really specific, it's helpful. So thanks for all the work and the time. Thank you so much. All right, we are moving on to new business, and that would be Agenda Item 9, and we're looking at a bidding of an award for a parking project. So I think we're going to hear from Director.
Bear with us, we deal with the technical.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
I will comment, I do like this TV, so clear. I keep doing this, though.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Mansell. If please, as the council director, Mansell, he will present the information.
Thank you, Director.
Vice Mayor and counsel, this item is a word of a contract for the Healdsburg Public Parking Lots project. So the recommendation is two parts. It's a word of a contract to Northern Pacific Corporation in the amount of $601,290 for the base bid, which is the City Hall North parking lot, plus bid alternate two, which is the West Plaza parking lot. And the second part is to approve an overall project construction budget in the amount of $661,419 to include the construction contract and a 10% contingency. This is the City Hall North parking lot. It, right now, is, or the location of this is on what is fondly known as the Christmas Tree Lot. The North parking lot will add 74 new spaces, including six new electric vehicle charging stations. We didn't have a picture of the West Plaza parking lot expansion that would show up well on the screen, so the best thing is for us to do is to give you an explanation of where it is. It adds 34 new parking spaces along the westerly side of the West Plaza, along the North Coast Railroad Authority right-of-way. So the net increase of parking spaces is 108. Funding is three-part bond proceeds, which is $356,000 allocated for the, that have been allocated previously for the City Hall North parking lot. Measure V, which has, that's $160,000, that was previously allocated to the Dry Creek 101 interchange. That can be reallocated now to this project because the county has recently committed to funding approximately $160,000 towards the Dry Creek 101 interchange. And then bond proceeds, $145,419 previously allocated to the purity project, and that provides a total funding of the $661,419. Again, the recommendation is back up, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Do you want to start? Do you have any questions? I have a few questions, but it's unorthodox for me to begin, I think, so I'll let you go.
Great, I'll jump in. So can you touch on the discrepancies between the original estimate of the 356 and why, and what has led to the big discrepancy?
I wouldn't call it a discrepancy. When the construction industry is extremely busy, as they are now, prices go up because they don't need to plan for work in the immediate future, so they bid high, and if they're successful, then they'll take care of it and get it built. It's just that simple.
So I could add one thing, though. I think if you take a look at the estimate for West Plaza, and correct me if I'm wrong, Director, that number came in as expected at 125. I believe that the number that was a bit surprising was where the lot is, City Hall, and I think there is some additional undergrounding, which staff has been discussing, is it necessary? And then to the director's point is, bids are coming in high right now.
And then, for how long are these bids valid? What's our timeline? When does the, when do the bids expire?
Typically, I think the contract had a 60-day. The reason for that is to be able to schedule it for council meetings, is get approvals.
60 days from August 1st?
Correct.
Okay. That's it for me for now.
If I could add, I'm sorry, before we go on, there was a discussion some time ago with the Kiwanis, and there's another alternate, actually the alternate number one, which calls for the placement of some, I'll call them stanchions, foundation stanchions, to be able to support their Christmas tree sales. So I think the intent is you're able to put poles into these holes, if you will, and then be able to enable something where you can put wires up and the trees can use that. So that's an add alternate, I think, one of about $19,000. And the discussions we've had with Kiwanis was, they would pay for that, they would commit to paying for that. I know there's representatives from Kiwanis here tonight, so I'm sure Mr. Collins will be able to discuss kind of where they are in that whole process. But because of that uncertainty, that's why staff's recommendation is 661, including just the two parking lots, not the stanchions, or whatever we're calling those. And I believe Kiwanis can let counsel know where they are as far as they could with the funding on that.
On the electric vehicle charging stations, there's six of them, I believe, is that right?
Correct.
So I believe there's some grant funds for that sort of thing. So if we move forward with this, and this might be a question for Director Crowley, or for you, I don't know.
Director Crowley.
So if we move forward with this, can we still apply? Is there a way we can apply in conjunction with doing this contract something? I mean, it looks like about 30 grand, is that right, for the six stalls?
Yeah, it'll be all of 30 grand to get that done. It's pretty expensive to put in the EV charging stations, but we're working with the North County Air Resource Quality Control Board, they have a grant that will help offset some of those costs, and then we'll also potentially use some of the cap and trade money, maybe some of the grant money that you've heard from the BW settlement, that's not quite available yet to us. So it wouldn't be available for this project, it would be potentially available for future projects, but we will try and grab the grants from the North County Air Quality Control Board to offset these costs.
So we could still proceed if we decided, yeah, we want to move forward with this, and be able to then apply and potentially reduce the cost?
My understanding of how the grants work with the North Coast is yes.
Okay, thank you.
I could also add, being with Sonoma County Transportation Authority, that they're also asking us questions about that, and there's money. I think you mentioned the cap and trade. So I think there is a resource for the electric vehicle charging stations. They did ask me at the meeting for the Air Quality District, they did ask what was going to happen with this. So one of the questions I have before we open this up is, I want to know if there's any kind of a visual on this. And again, I'm just trying to understand. So we're redoing City Hall, and we're going to create a parking lot over there. So are we still going to have parking over there for the city employees, or is that going to be where we're going to put city employees?
So I could answer that. So the parking that are, the parking requirements as for City Hall will be accommodated on the existing City Hall parking lot footprint, excluding what we're talking about right now. So as far as the building requirements per square foot, per spark parking space, all of that is accommodated on the current footprint. What we're talking about right now is net, additional net parking. Your question regarding the parking behind City Hall, at this point, that parking would go away for city employees, for everybody for that matter, because it is part of the lease agreement for the CDC. That being said, we're still able to accommodate our employee parking on this existing site. We are in discussions about what that would look like by potentially leasing some of that space back, just for the community to be able to utilize, but we're in the beginning discussions of that.
So let me be clear on this. You're saying that our property line literally ends, and we don't have any access to any parking that's even up against this building? So they're going to put up a sign, whoever that landowner is over there that we've been renting from, and essentially, we're not allowed to have our city employees. So when I come to a council meeting, I'm not parking back there, it's going to have to be over there. So this parking lot is really important to us, because it's really not about adding a lot of parking spaces, it's about keeping City Hall and our Town Hall, people that come to visit this place, need a place to park. So part of where I go with this is, you know, okay, pave it, but, you know, you build it, they come. I mean, at some point, we need to look at regulating this parking lot, because I don't see it helping at all. It's absolutely integral to this huge project, that we have a place for people that work here and that come to visit us on a night like tonight, that they'll have somewhere to park that's close by, and that will be it. I mean, obviously, they can go that way, but you know what I mean? Like, it seems like this is, we have to do this. Like, it seems like this is, we have to do this. But in the meanwhile, are we ever going to regulate that parking so that we can actually use it for what we know we need it for, which is to run City Hall and to have access for our public?
So to answer that last part, the answer is yes. As council may be aware, we're bringing Walker parking back at the next meeting to discuss a parking plan, and this portion of it will be a small part of what that parking plan may or may not be, but we'll be able to have ongoing discussions as we develop a citywide parking plan over the next several months.
And as far as vision, looking forward to who might be parking in this expensive parking lot, I'm just curious. I understand it costs money to pave, but I'm just curious about what we're actually going to be able to recover and how it functions. So yeah, I think the vision for that parking lot is important to me, to know who's going to be in there and what we're giving it to eventually. And I want to hear from the Kiwanis, I'm going to stop asking questions. I'm going to open this to the public.
Actually, ma'am, I do have one for the question. The recommendation about moving, reallocating some funding from the Three North Project, what would be the net, I mean, can we talk about the impact on that project with this reallocation of funds?
So in the staff report, if we take $145,419 from that project, it leaves a balance of approximately 1.2, it's 1.188939 left in the Three North Project. And then, again, talking to Director Thiemig, based on some previous projections, the parking component of Three North, and again, it's a bit squishy, is it right around a little over $700,000? That number seems high, so I think that has more to do with providing some of the infrastructure that will support the actual farmer's market, once that is actually done. So I'd want to give council some additional information as far as what that $700,000-plus actually represents, as far as the parking lot goes.
And just leaves me another question. Are there going to be any trees or any shading at all for this parking lot, or is it just
There are planter areas, but they tend to be at the four corners of the lot. And then, you can see along the southerly edge, but depends on really where you park, because there's a pretty good row of trees along the north side that are on the adjoining
Any other comments or questions before we open to the public? Okay. All right. On this subject. Thank you.
Hi, Randy Collins, 51st Street. I'm currently president of the Healdsburg Kiwanis Club. As you know, we've been using this lot for probably the last six, seven, maybe longer than that. We sell Christmas trees. So when we heard that there were plans to pave this over, we approached staff, and they actually were very flexible and great working with us, because one of the things we need to do in order to operate the lot is to put poles in the ground, which we string pin your wire across, and that's what the trees will lean up against. So when somebody comes to look at a tree, they can easily look at it and see if it's going to fit in their home. So obviously, you wouldn't be very happy if we bored holes in your parking lot. So we work to have these sleeves, bollards, whatever you want to call them, installed. We recognize that that's not something you can pay for, because they would benefit us and be a gift to public funds and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, we said we would pay for that portion of it. So where we are at right now is now that we know what that dollar amount is, which is approximately $20,000, and we communicated that with our club. Our club felt that that is something that everybody wanted input on. So actually, tomorrow at our, one of our meetings, we actually are going to vote on to fund this. And I let Brett and City Manager know that we would be voting on this, and that the moment we know the outcome of that vote, I will communicate that to them, so they know how to proceed. But we do recognize as we move forward, we will be paying $20,000 for these features that will allow us to continue to operate the lot there. So, does he have any questions?
Is that, may we ask questions to the Kiwanis representative? I'd like to, but I don't know.
May I, absolutely.
Okay. So are these, just trying to understand this. So during those months, or not months, it's, I know, because I buy my Christmas tree there and I have my stand every year, but I just am curious. So that would start Thanksgiving Day weekend, and then the parking would all be altered, obviously. Do we have any idea how many spaces it takes?
Well, what, so I don't have the plans with me, but basically, what's going to happen? There's going to be 40 holes in the ground. So, and so of those 40 holes, you'll, basically, will form two rows. So the configuration will be similar to what you might have encountered in the past. So you'll rock down the center row, and trees will be on either side with poles, and two poles, and obviously, wire between them. So really, there won't be any parking on the site. You know, what we will do is we will fence it off, just like we normally would. And one of the things that's nice about the way it's been designed is we'll actually include a hookup, so we can plug in our trailer, where we have our cash operations and collect monies and all, and do all the debit and credit card stuff. So, but the lot will be fenced off, just like we normally do. So when people come and park, they will park in the spots that they will historically have parked in, which is in that little cul-de-sac at the end of Allen Court.
Why do you need to drill holes? I mean, I've been by Home Depot and some of these other places, and they can sell Christmas trees with, you know, it's like a flat plate with a tube on it. Is there a reason that holes need to be drilled and you can't use something that doesn't affect the parking or the surface?
No, that's a good question. So the way we get the trees from Oregon is they all come just flat cut, then bound. And the trees you see at Home Depot, typically, they have built-in stands to them. There's a tremendous amount of labor that's obviously associated with that. And to be frank, running a Christmas tree lot, the labor we spend is huge. I mean, it's enormous. In fact, it's kind of come close to burning our members out. And the only reason it's been successful in the past is we've had volunteers come in from the Litten Rehabilitation Facility who come in and provide basically half the manpower we have. So they're not there this year. So this is kind of the perfect storm. It's happened for us, that's another reason why we're doing the vote, because it impacts all of us. So, but it's mainly the labor. I'm sorry, got off on a tangent there.
Randy, I wonder, in considering the expense of installing the bollards, if the Kiwanis consider just trying to find a different location for the Christmas tree lot?
We've actually had a lot of discussion about that. And the problem that we're concerned about is, we all know what's happened in real estate in Healdsburg. And, you know, Eric Drew has offered the old Loves Farm up on Grove Street, but we also have heard that that's currently on the market, too. So, you know, what we do might work one year, might work two years, but it's not going to be a long-term solution, and this obviously would be a long-term solution. That's why we move forward and work with staff.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So are there any other comments about this parking project and modification of the bid and where we are as far as funding it? Is there any other conversation that needs to take place up here? Public comment is still on, by the way, I'm just kind of rhetorically questioning here. Anybody want to add anything?
Rosie Fabian Sherman Street. Hello, everybody up there. I had a couple of questions, probably more for Brent than anyone else. One, how close to the railroad tracks would the new parking spots come on the West Plaza? And the other part of that is, I noticed when I was working for Becoming Independent, that during the week, the work week, the valet parking spots at the Healdsburg Hotel were empty. And that's two lots, you know, two aisles in the lot, that were pretty empty. Is it possible for the city to approach the hotel and work out some kind of an agreement to where they could open up that space for people to park in the meantime, so we can get some more parking spots, just because it just seems like it's a bit of wasted space? So that's pretty much all I had to ask.
Anyone else like to comment? Thank you.
Good evening again. Marilyn Joyce. So what about the Healdsburg Community Center lot for Christmas trees? It's a lot of space over there, and a lot of it isn't paved. Seems like it would be a good place. It would allow parking for people who are coming to buy trees. And the other thing is, Phil Lux and I each did informal surveys of parking in Healdsburg about a dozen years ago, and what we both learned was that there wasn't a shortage of parking, but what there was a shortage of was parking spaces that were in the shade. So if you grow a tree, at least in the summertime, you have a lot more parking available. So just encourage you to put some trees in those lots. Thank you.
Anybody else? So it looks like we're going to close public comment now and come back to the, and have some conversation or any motions on the floor here, or how are we doing?
I just wanted to say a couple of things. I, if you do the math, 108 spaces ends up being about six grand a space, which I don't think is that outrageous, especially when you're talking about something that'll last quite a while. And I like the idea that we've got Walker parking coming right on the heels of this discussion, that we can look at what we're going to do with that, whether, you know, we can basically throw that into the inventory and the discussion for when Walker parking's So as far as, there was some question about pulling money from the cherry site. I tend to look at parking as parking, and it's kind of not regional, but, you know, allocated wherever in the city. And I think these allocations work, and I think it makes sense. I don't think the priority for the cherry site has changed. It doesn't mean, just because we're moving a little bit now, doesn't mean it's the priority for that. It hasn't dropped in importance. I want to make sure that the public is aware that while we move things around, it doesn't diminish the priority we have on the cherry site. I'd be prepared to make a motion whenever appropriate.
I guess I want to throw out the idea of maybe, given that the bids are still valid for a while, that we entertain the idea of waiting until we hear from the Walker parking before we make a decision? That's, it's an idea that percolated up just while I'm sitting here. I don't know what you all thought about that.
And is that just from a cost standpoint, or because you think there may be recommendations to change the layout, or?
Yeah, I mean, there could be, I have no idea what they're saying, so there might be some recommendation that says, you know, look, maybe turn, create parking lots that are, that have the actual, that are gated for pay. I don't know. I'm just throwing an example out there. But, you know, it's in two weeks.
So they won't be able, in that time, to give you, they haven't evaluated the addition of 108 parking spaces. That will be in addition to what they've already looked at at this point. That would prolong, which is fine. The other point why it's coming today, we were trying to get this actually back in June, so we could have the parking lot completed prior to this winter, so we can make sure the parking lot's in place prior to Christmas, for the Christmas tree lot to go into effect. Because if we prolong it after that, if we don't get it built, we're into the wet season, and then it prolongs the parking lot really back into next spring. So the timing was part of that as well.
I understand that, okay.
And I understand your concern. However, I do look at, okay, we're getting inventory out there, parking inventory, and we hear nonstop about, no parking, no parking, and this is something that we're able to at least get it out there. And if they recommend that, you know, we do Clipper Cards, or that should be paid parking valet, or shifting things around, I think that can be a discussion that we can apply to spaces that are now existing.
I do think, knowing the vision of how you're going to put people, I mean, I'm just really concerned now that I know that this back lot is no longer part of the City Hall. I mean, I just never thought of that the whole time, it just didn't come into my, I thought for some reason, this strip of parking, and that is a lot of spaces, because I park here. So knowing that, I just really feel like, no matter what, if we do go forward on this, we have to link this to the vision of what is actually going to happen over here in terms of who's going to use it. And certainly, I have real interest in supporting the Kiwanis Club's efforts to maintain a place. It's very community-oriented, it's, I mean, it's very familiar to all of us for years. So I like that. I just, I'm just concerned about not having, I mean, you can build it and you can have something, but if it's not, if it's not, you know, really making a difference in the areas that we want them to make a difference in, the area like the people that are working here, and we're not just inviting more people to park there that aren't necessarily going to be benefiting. Because 6,000 a space sounds cheap, but it really isn't if you look at what we're doing by creating all these places for cars. So I have no problem proceeding with this, but I do want to link this to the Walker Study, and I really do want to make sure that no matter what, we keep talking about who's going to be in that lot and how it's going to be used on a daily basis by the people that we want to use it for. I mean, I just feel that's a problem right now, without knowing the Parker Study and knowing more, or the Walker Study. So I concur with what Councilman Neokas was suggesting. It seems like we should know more about what we're going to use it for, but I can go along with it as long as you know that I'm concerned, and I hope that we can link this with the vision of parking down here, because it is an ongoing problem. So with that, are there any motions on the floor?
I just want to say one more thing. The only, so it's, I mean, I realize we're taking money from Measure V as well, and I was actually kind of hoping that we could have some of that Measure V money that we don't have to spend on the Dry Creek Interchange to do a little bit more bike and ped, because I just don't, you've heard me say it before, I'm just not a big fan of spending more money on parking. So I would like, as a personal statement, I'm happy to go forward with this and to keep it, just so we know that we have this inventory, especially given your observations about the loss of that parking. I just want to make sure that, you know what, beyond this, until we have a really comprehensive plan that incorporates bike, ped, and transit, and smart ways of managing our parking resources, this is it. I'm not going to support more construction parking until I'm happy with our strategic approach to it. So with that.
If I may interject, so the motion in front of you does not include bid alternate one, which is the $19,000 for the Kiwanis, because we haven't got a commitment, they're voting on that tomorrow. If it pleases the council, would you like to amend the recommendation to include that amount, or would you like to go with the existing recommendation that staff has in front of you? We can adjust the resolution on the fly after speaking with the city attorney, if you want to include the $19,000, I think it's $19,000 for Kiwanis. If, in fact, they do not agree to fund that portion, I believe we can do a deductive change. Is that correct?
Just to be clear, they would be paying for that.
They would be paying for the $19,000, and I don't have the number directly in front of me.
$19,950.
Yes, yes.
Alternatively, one might add that to the contract as a consent calendar item? Change order?
Yes, we could do, that would probably be cleaner, thank you.
We're back to the motion that we're going to put forth? And you want to know if we want to include the $20,000?
Can we go to commercial break? Another funding source.
I'm drafting some new language for the council. I would like for the council to state in the motion what is included in alternate two. So if you can just give me one second, I'm typing up some language, and I can give it to the council member who will make the motion, just to read rather than me telling you.
So tomorrow, when Access Healdsburg receives this, it will be more of a silent movie type of approach than the full sound approach.
David, may I?
Please.
Actually, what is being recorded by our AV is video with very nice sound, actually. It is the live streaming to Acela. That software is taking the sound out. So what will actually be provided to Access Healdsburg will be a perfect video with perfect sound.
So no opportunities for humorous captions? Darn it.
I move we award contract to Northern Pacific Corporation in the amount of $601,290 for the base bid, City Hall North Parking Lot, and plus bid alternate to West Plaza Parking Lot, and approve an overall project construction budget in the amount of $661,419 to include the construction contract and the 10% contingency.
Second?
Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell.
So we're moving on to new business, item B, which is council appointments. And I believe at this moment, we need to understand that we've had some changes and we're going to go ahead and reconfigure perhaps who's going to what meetings and who's going to represent on certain boards and commissions. So at this point, we probably need to begin with looking at what's available. So if you look, we already have appointed some people, but I believe with Councilor Gold's appearance on the dais here and being part of the group, she would be likely a person that would want to perhaps take on some positions. So has there been any discussion about that? Do you have any that you're interested in or?
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank council members Hagley and Noyokas for stepping forward with NCPA, N-T-A-N-C, because those are big commitments and very important roles. So thank you. Looking at the other vacancies, let's see, so there's the Air Resource Board. So there's a need for an alternate, and I would be happy to be that alternate, or I would be happy to be the representative if Vice Mayor Mansell feels a little overburdened and would prefer to shift to the alternate position. I'd make that offer. Similarly, the Legislative Committee, I'm happy to be the alternate, or if Councilmember Noyokas is feeling a little overburdened and he wants to be the alternate, I would be the representative, as you prefer. So that takes care of those two. What else is needed?
I was going to ask you actually about ABAG, if you'd be interested in being the delegate for that. Not to spring that on you on video here, but I don't, I think they meet twice a year. Do you have any interest in that?
Yeah, I could do ABAG.
Okay. I mean, it's Oakland, I think, is the meeting place, but yeah.
And Mobile.
All right. And then I'm just wondering if there's anything else we should clean up here as far as what else might be open.
Economic Development Steering Committee?
Oh, that, yes. That's an alternate position also, right? I could do that as well.
I was going to ask you about Health Action, Councilor Gold. I haven't had a chance to talk to you about that. I've not attended any meetings. I've had my alternate at both of them. Councilmember Noyokas knows that. It's a really dynamic group, but I don't know if you're interested in that. I think I left you a message about that. But that one might be also an idea.
How often do they meet?
Once a month? Not even, huh?
Less than that.
Yeah, like three times a year, maybe four times a year.
Yes, I can do that.
So would you be willing to serve on Health Action?
Yeah, so then I'd be the representative.
You would be the rep?
I'll be the alternate.
That would help. And if possible, I'd like to maintain the Northern Sonoma County air pollution quality.
Okay, then I'll just be the alternate.
Yeah, if you could do that, that would be great. Anything else?
In CPA?
Legislative Committee, you prefer? I'd be the alternate, Joe?
Yeah, I think I've, I'm getting my sea legs with that, so I think I'm happy to stay on.
Okay. And then there is the Oversight Board to the Redevelopment Successor Agency. There's a mayor's appointment aspect. I wasn't sure if we wanted to have somebody represent us from this council on that successor agency, or if we want to maintain it. I know that it's going to sunset maybe in another year or something, but I just wondered if you, I think it's a mayor's appointment. I'm not sure if anyone even knows what that is, but that's another one at the bottom of the list that needs to be looked at.
I don't believe that one needs to be a council member.
Doesn't need to be elected?
No. Doesn't, yeah.
And currently, Mr. Plasse is on it. Gary, are you willing to serve?
Thank you. Okay, well then we know we have that covered. Thank you. All right, so at this point, it looks like.
In CPA?
Yeah, I think we just, I mean, Councilmember Gold mentioned, but I think I'm willing to throw my hat in the ring as alternate. And then with Councilmember Hagley becoming primary.
And that would also be the Transmission Agency of Northern California?
Yeah.
So both those.
Can I just say a couple of things about NCPA? I've been, you know, the alternate to former Councilmember Plasse, and, you know, it's pretty big shoes to fill, not just his, but Jason Lyles going back. And it's been amazing. And Councilmember Noyokas, you'll see this when we go to the meetings, I mean, there are other cities like Santa Clara, Palo Alto, they're members of this. And Healdsburg has a very big presence on this. As a small town with 11,500 or 12,000 people, we have a very big voice involved in a lot of the policy. And, you know, just the level of involvement that we've had going all the way back to Jason Lyles and the relationships we have with the legislators is, I can't say enough. And a lot of that, I do want to commend former Councilmember Plasse. And I do want to share a little story from the NCPA meeting where, because the shift in the council, the agenda packet came to me when I picked it up here. So I go up and I go, hey, Gary, did you get the agenda? No, I haven't seen it yet. Item number 19 was recognizing Councilmember Plasse, former Councilmember Plasse for his work with NCPA. So I talked to the others there and I said, hey, Gary hasn't seen this. Let's give him a different one. Because he was the vice chair of the committee. And so he, and the chair was absent, so it just happened that when we were at Murphy's, he was going to be running the meeting. So we gave him a different agenda, got to number 18 and go, all right, well, if there's, you know, good order, I guess I could take as much as I want as my last meeting, ha, kind of thing. Everybody's, whoa, 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 whoa. They stood up and gave him a nice plaque that acknowledges, and this is, sorry, I'm taking a little long, but one of the things in here is, he was adamant that Healdsburg is referred to as the beautiful city of Healdsburg. I think you heard that at some of the meetings, and that's stuck and I will continue on that tradition. They also did, because there are a lot of other wine country cities, that they kind of gave him a hard time, says, whereas Gary hailing from Sonoma County, from Sonoma County, the alleged wine capital of California, which is another one of his catchphrases. So anyway, I just wanted to acknowledge the work that former Councilmember Plasse did, and I'd be happy to share this acknowledgement that, in CPA, all of the cities got together and did on behalf of him up at Murphy's.
Thank you for sharing that and for commending our commitment and the service that Gary Plasse has given us in relation to the Northern California Power Agency. It's pretty ominous what's been going on, and I definitely have an appreciation for it after visiting and certainly hearing about his impact and his willingness to take leadership roles, that I hope we can continue to walk in those steps and have that legacy, not just of Lyles, but Plasse and moving it forward and making Hagley also revered and powerful in the power agency circle. So thank you for sharing that. So at this point, I think we've come to some conclusions.
Resolutions?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure we got everything figured out there. So two resolutions. So is there anyone that's willing to offer one of these resolutions?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comment. Thank you, city manager. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak? Nope. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. Okay, so now we're open to resolutions.
I'll offer a resolution of the City Council, the City of Healdsburg, appointing a commissioner and alternates to the Northern California Power Agency and rescinding all previous appointments.
And for the record, could you acknowledge it's?
Yes, it's Councilmember Hagley as representative and Councilmember Noyokas as alternate.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay. All right, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Okay. Resolution also, so this is for the Transmission Agency, so we need.
I'll move that we appoint a commissioner, David Hagley, and alternate myself, Joe Noyokas, to the Transmission Agency of Northern California Commission and rescinding all previous appointments.
Second.
Okay.
Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Noyokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell.
Thank you. So we're moving on to written communications, and I think that's more or less an information item, right? We have three different written communications, and there's nothing to say about that. Is that procedurally just there for us to know that we have access to those written communications? Okay. And we're going to move to adjourn this meeting. So I am open to a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
All right. Thank you very much. We're now adjourning this meeting. And we are now opening another meeting. So hold on. So this is now a second meeting for this evening, and it's the City of Healdsburg City Council Redevelopment Successor Agency, Healdsburg Public Financing Authority Concurrent Special Meeting Agenda. So I'm going to call to order this meeting and approve the agenda.
And just to confirm that you also mentioned the City Council of the City of Healdsburg.
The City Council of the City of Healdsburg. Thank you.
Move to approve the agenda?
Second.
And it sounds like we just need to say a for this one, right? So yea or nay?
Yes, for the agenda.
We don't have to do a roll call vote for that. Okay. Okay, we're open to public comments, so if you'd like to make.
Just jump right into the staff report.
I am so sorry. Excuse me, I've never been to this meeting before.
Vice Mayor, that we haven't.
Is this new to me? I mean, is this like?
We haven't done one in a long time, so this.
I've never done one.
Right, so I think I can probably count on one hand how many times I've seen one of these and I've been here for 13 years, so.
It's different color paper, that's all I know. Thank you. So I'm going to turn it over to Assistant City Manager. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mansell. Heather I. Paletti, Assistant City Manager. And before you tonight is a successor agency bond refunding. And tonight, are technically only two actions. Though there's four resolutions, there's really only two actions. Looks kind of complicated. I'm going to do my best to make this really easy. The first action calls for a refunding of prior bonds. It directs staff to engage professional services to assist with that refunding. The estimated annual interest savings is about $163,000 with over $2.2 million over the life of the bonds. The second action is three resolutions approving debt policies for three different agencies. That's why it was necessary to close one meeting and open another meeting where all three of those agencies' boards are here. So here we go. The existing bond is a bond we issued in December of 2010 for about $21 million. The purpose of those bonds was to refund our 1995 tax allocation bonds, and it financed a lot of redevelopment infrastructure projects. In fact, we are still in the process of spending that money. The Roundabout is one of the projects. We did some street scape projects. Part of those redevelopment monies are allocated also to the purity site that we were just discussing earlier. The bonds also funded a reserve fund for the bonds, funded capitalized interest for the bonds, and paid for costs of issuance. Again, that was way back in December of 2010, right before RDA dissolution. And that is why it's, that's also the reason why it's taking us so long to spend the money, because essentially those funds were kind of, we were able to get those bonds sold and then dissolution happened. And so they were kind of put in a little fund where we could not spend them while things were working through the courts. Okay, refunding plan. Series 2017 bond of about $17,870,000. Final maturity, August 1, 2034, same term. It'll be a negotiated sale and refund the remaining bond amounts. As discussed earlier, the average annual net savings is about $163,000 with net present value savings of a little over $2 million. Any savings will be split with the other 13 taxing agencies. A sample of those agencies include the county, the county library, the Healdsburg Unified School District, and the water agency. The city's percentage is about 24%. The cost of issuances was taken into the consideration when calculating the savings. And on July 19, 2017, the Oversight Board, which is comprised of representatives from the taxing agencies, met and approved moving forward with the refunding. The refunding process, tonight, the successor agency approves moving forward with the refunding. Early September, we'll bring it back for formal bond documents to the successor agency and the Oversight Board. Again, early September, the documentation will be forwarded to the county and to the state, that Department of Finance. They have five days to confirm its review and 60 days to consider the Oversight Board's actions. And then, assuming all goes well, early October, we'll bring back the official statement to the successor agency for approval. So after tonight, the successor agency, you, the successor agency and council, have two other options to approve this transaction. It'll come back to you two more times after this. And then late November, early December, the transaction will close and we'll sell the bonds. There's another wrinkle in this process. A new requirement, legislation passed in 2016, effective January 1 of 17, Senate Bill 1029, requires agencies to approve a debt policy, meeting the requirements of California Government Code Section 8855, prior to issuing the refunding. And our Bond and Disclosure Council, Jones Hall, has prepared the proposed debt policy. And that's where those three resolutions come in. One policy for each of the agencies, the council, the successor agency, and the Public Financing Authority. Each one has to have their own debt policy and therefore their own resolution. The first recommendation is acting as a successor agency, adopt a resolution, finding that there are significant potential savings available to the successor agency and applicable taxing agencies by refunding prior bonds. Authorize the filing of the resolution and plan of refunding and saving analysis with the appropriate parties. Direct staff to undertake the refunding and prepare all necessary refunding documentation and engage professional services to assist with the refunding. Second resolution, acting as a successor agency, adopt a resolution approving a debt management policy. Third resolution, acting as a city council, adopt a resolution approving a debt management policy. And fourth resolution, acting as a Healdsburg Public Financing Authority, adopt a resolution approving a debt management policy. And I do have the financing team here tonight to help answer any questions. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Assistant City Manager. Are there any questions? Clarifying questions from the?
Can you explain, summarize the debt policies and that you, that you came up with for the three agencies and, or three, yes, agencies?
Actually, actually what I'm going to do, since Joan Hall actually wrote the debt policies, do you mind if I have them come up to the podium?
Please.
And actually, so I'm going to ask Dave or James. Thank you.
Hello, good evening. James Wurzniak at Jones Hall, Bond Counsel and Disclosure Council to the successor agency. Actually, that's part of your resolution, if you show approve us, to appoint us as professionals. We, as Heather said, we drafted a debt policy suitable for the city, successor agency and the Financing Authority. And the requirements, much of the text in the debt policy comes from the requirements of Government Code 8855. And a few of the highlights there are setting forth the purposes for which the debt will be issued, whether it's capital improvements, things of that nature, the goals behind issuance of debt, and the policy goes into the goals. Again, long-term financing for projects that have long-term benefit. And in refunding scenarios like we have today, certain savings thresholds for refunding bonds. So there's three or four requirements set forth in 8855 of the Government Code, all of which are set forth in the debt policy.
And how does that debt policy, I mean, it looks fairly boilerplate, is that a fair assumption?
Yeah, exactly. We have adopted or proposed this form of debt policy, given this to many of our local agency clients. We do bond deals throughout the state. And I would say it is fairly uniform, you know, we have crafted it to work for the city and the successor agency. But if there's any fine tuning, any things you'd like to take a look at, it, it is a living document. You could always amend it at a future meeting and that kind of thing. So that, that's no problem at all. But there are just the, the certain requirements that I mentioned previously that we want to make sure are in there so that we satisfy the Government Code provisions.
Is there anything specific that, that fine tuning that you already did that's unique to Heelsburg that, and if so, can you explain?
No, it's a general, it's a general.
Right.
I'll call it the boilerplate policy, just like you said.
Sure, sure, okay. Does it impact, does it make any difference at all to us in the way that we conduct our debt actions?
I will say not necessarily because we are very conservative with our debt. So like you said, it's going to be for a long-term infrastructure project. We're not, we're not going out issuing debt to, as I call it, to, to pay our groceries or to pay our rent. This is, this is to improve Heelsburg. It's that infrastructure project that no way, there are no other ways to pay for it. And so those are one of the big requirements when it comes to debt. And also what's going to be in there also is, is when we're refunding a bond such as tonight is what's proposed, there has to be significant savings. Otherwise, we don't want to do this because there's a cost of issuance. So that's why it's important to note that that cost of issuance was taken into consideration when calculating that savings and that savings is still a significant savings worthy, worthy of refunding. So it's things like that. What it does is, we, the way we operate, we, we operate very conservative, but you never know who's going to be City Manager, who's going to be Finance Director tomorrow. And we want to make sure that, that, that the city continues to run in a conservative manner. And what that policy does is create that.
Okay, thank you.
So going from, right now, we're at 5.42%, we're going down to 3.42%, correct? Or am I looking at, yeah, that's as of July 25th. So is there any defeasance, prepayment, any, I mean, I'm assuming we are obligated to the current bondholders for a certain return, are we just paying that off? Or am I getting my, my work life mixed up with government funding?
No, no, it's okay. I've got, I've, I've got a lot of experts around me. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I've got two other people in the audience that can definitely answer those questions. I've got Nikki Tallman from Brandis Tallman Underwriters and I have Ken Decker. He's one of our, our fiscal consultants. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let them, give them a little bit of chance at the mic to answer that question.
Yeah, let the numbers people talk about this one.
So the two questions I have are, you know, defeasance, prepayment, whatever, retiring the existing debt at a certain rate. Can we just walk away from that? And then the second one is, are there any loan fees in here? I see a lot of legal fees and, and that sort of things, which looks about standard for these kind of transactions, but I'm wondering if there's a loan fee as well?
So to answer your first question, these bonds are, the, the existing 2010 bonds are callable on August 1 of 2020 at par. So you could simply wait between now and 2020 and redeem them at par, or you can create what's called an escrow account where you take the bond proceeds from the refunding, you deposit it, you purchase government agency securities, treasuries generally or treasury-like securities, and they would redeem the bond. So the minute that escrow is established, those prior bonds are paid all the way through August 1 of 2020 and paid off on that date. They're considered defeased and off your books the day the refunding issue closes. Okay, so that's the defeasance portion of this. And to answer your other question, yes, the cost of issuance, in my savings analysis, which I believe was a part of the, of staff report, I listed all the cost of issuance in there and that is all the cost of issuance except for the underwriter's fee, which they're paid as a percentage of the bond issue. This is not a private placement or direct placement transaction like we've done a couple of those in the past. This is actual public offering, so it's not a particular bank that would charge you a loan fee. These are public investors that are going to buy your municipal bonds, so the successor agency.
The reserve fund is that $2 million?
That's correct.
So we're borrowing that to put in a reserve account to cover the?
No, the, the prior reserve fund of a little over $2 million is sitting there and that's going to be contributed to make the refunding transaction smaller. It's part of the sources, so we have to get rid of those prior bond proceeds and put them into the new transaction to bring it down. That's why the new transaction is considerably smaller in size than the existing bonds. And we are not intending to have to have a reserve fund for this. We're looking at purchasing a surety policy and you won't have a reserve fund going forward. And part of the problem with the reserve fund in this interest rate environment is you're currently earning 1%, somewhere around that in your current money and you're paying 5.42%. So that's a cost of carry. In this low interest rate environment, doesn't make sense to have a reserve fund. It's better to buy an insurance policy and not have that cash sitting around at a very low investment rate.
And this will be a fixed rate?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. So your job, this is really a basic one, okay, and I'm just going to do, this is what I need. Who are you? You're, you're hired by the City of Heelsburg. I mean, this is a new territory, so you're hired to do this for us. So we contract with you and you're here to help us get what we need, which is obviously some infrastructure, if that's where we're going, to build something and save for the roundabout. Let's just go back to that poem. So I guess my question would be like, so how much does it cost your services? Is that built in? Is that the amount that you're talking about?
Yeah, so let's, let's talk a little bit about the roles of the parties here. My name is Ken Decker with Del Rio Advisors. I have served in the capacity of municipal advisor to the city on some sewer refunding bonds and the two prior transactions done by the successor agency. My role is sort of a fiduciary to the city. My role in the financing team is to be your advocate and to deal fairly with and make sure that you're getting the best transaction. Brandis Tallman, Nikki Tallman, who's in the audience back there, she's with the underwriter. So their job is an arms-length transaction to sell the bonds to their investors. So they're a bit torn in their role because they want to provide the city the best interest rates, but they also have investors that they want to sell bonds. So what they've done is, under new regulations called SCC regulations and Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board regulations, we are, I am as a municipal advisor now a regulated entity where it defines very clearly that my role is an advocate to the city or to successor agency in this case, where her role is more of an arms-length transaction as the underwriter. So we play different roles. And the other two gentlemen sitting back there in the back, David Fama and James, I'm going to screw up his name, Wurzniak, I've done that for a long time now, they're, they're the legal counsel. So their first, their first role is to act in the role of bond counsel. So they're providing a legal opinion that these bonds are, can be duly issued and that they're tax exempt. And the disclosure counsel role is the underwriter uses the official statement for the bonds as a marketing document and their firm will draft that. It tells all about the bonds, about the successor agency, all the, all the items specific to it. And, and one thing, Vice Mayor, I wanted to point out too, is this is a refinancing, so we can only refinance for savings. The successor agency is forbidden from issuing any new money for projects, unfortunately, part of dissolution. So this is simply generating annual savings of about $163,000 a year that can be shared amongst the taxing entities, of which the city is a participant in that as well.
Is Heelsburg a pretty good investment?
Oh, yes.
So when you go out and market this on a public level, which is what you suggested you're going to do, you're, you have an easier time with cities that are holding their ground and staying in the black, if you will, and have taken care of things in a, in a way.
The interesting part about this, this is not a city credit, this is a successor agency credit based on the, the former tax increment in your redevelopment project area. So you've had significant growth in assessed values in Heelsburg. A lot of it obviously driven by the tourist industry and all the development that goes around the wineries and all the other stuff that you've developed here. It, it is an unbelievable credit, but this is not a credit of the city. This is strictly a credit where these bonds are paid back solely from the tax increment that's collected at the county through the property tax rule and distributed. So it's not exactly a City of Heelsburg credit, even though it's going to have that name and that stigma is going to be fantastic in the marketplace.
Really appreciate the clarification.
You bet.
It's more, you talk, you know? Thank you. All right. So at this point, City Manager, we're still open to, to public comment? So is there anyone else that would like to ask a question or make any comments regarding this? There are three separate resolutions, is that correct? Four?
Four.
Yes, four. So at this time, is there any other, do we want to close down public comment? Okay. May we please close public comment?
Move to close?
Okay.
Second.
All right. And I think that no one's objecting to that? Okay. So now we're moving forward to four separate resolutions. Why don't you split those up? So we'll start with the first one on 31A.
I'll offer a resolution of the successor agency to the redevelopment agency of the City of Heelsburg, directing staff to initiate the process of refunding bonds issued by the former redevelopment agency of the City of Heelsburg.
I'll second that.
Okay. And will that be a roll call vote?
And this is to note for the record that this is as the successor agency. Board member Gold?
Yes.
Board member Hagley?
Yes.
Board member Nayokas?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Mansell?
Yes.
Okay. And we're moving on to the second resolution, which is a bit briefer. Who would like to offer that?
I'll, I'll, I'll move. I'll take this third one. I, I move, I, I, that we resolve, that we accept a resolution of the City Council of Heelsburg approving a debt management policy.
Second.
Okay, so board member, oh, they, they went for counsel? Sorry. So as the City Council, this resolution, Councilmember Gold?
Yes.
Councilmember Hagley?
Yes.
Councilmember Nayokas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mansell?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And another resolution, would you like to?
I'll do it.
Thank you.
Is that the right one? Okay. I'd like to offer a resolution, acting as a successor agency, adopt a resolution approving a debt management policy.
Second.
Board member Gold?
Yes.
Board member Hagley?
Yes.
Board member Nayokas?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Mansell?
Yes. Okay, and fourth and final resolution this evening, who would like to?
You do it.
Okay, I will. Okay, this is a successor agency to the development, oh, okay, I'll read it right off. Okay, screen. Acting as the Heelsburg Public Financing Authority, we are going, I move we adopt a resolution approving a debt management policy.
Second.
Board member Gold?
Yes.
Board member Hagley?
Yes.
Board member Nayokas?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Mansell?
Yes. Okay, thank you so much for working through that process of refunding the 2010 tax allocation bond and doing all those other things. Okay, so we are now in line to adjourn the special city council RSA HPFA meeting. Would you like me to state all those acronyms and what they stand for?
That's quite right.
All right, so is there a move to adjourn?
Most adjourned. Second.
Okay, clearly is passing. Thank you very much, everybody, for our first night back into the August month. Thank you.
Madam vice mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, that? It's refinancing, it's a refi of a, of a debt.
Articulate men, you know? You get it better than anybody, right? So what they're doing is essentially so, so.
No, the money's there. We've got the debt.
Yeah. I, I. Yeah. I'm going to learn from it. I'll watch the video. I think alcohol when I got a little too into the mother story. Thank you for staying to the whole time. You're very kind. Thank you. Discuss? I think people were kidding. I think it gets to a place where, yeah, they see.
Well, we haven't agreed on the, on the, on the 2000s yet, so.
I know, but there was no discussion. Especially in light of all this construction this year, it seems like it's going to be kind of. What are you doing?
Hey.
Be interested to hear more about the situation with the smarter anyway.
Oh.
Because we're coming, we should probably.
Yeah.
Thank you for hanging in there with me.
Gary.
Thank you. I got to learn a little bit more about. It's kind of been very stifling about, you know.
Smart house?
No, but also this.